Okay, hello, everybody. It is October 23rd, 2019. Welcome to the Ashland School Committee meeting. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. And we start each meeting by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools will be a model district that embraces the academic and social emotional growth of all students through a supportive collaborative and challenging experience. Our students will develop into lifelong learners who will contribute positively to society. Our order of business this evening is a call to order. Our opening procedures, our agenda review and adoption, our recognitions and student presentations. The Student Advisory Committee is here. National School Development Council Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership in Learning will be awarded, as well as the MASSS Certificate of Academic Excellence. And if you all will just indulge me for a second, I'm going to be reading this order a little bit differently because I'm going to be asking to move the order around a little bit, just for the convenience of some of the folks that are here. So, we're going to start with the Mindes Educational Programming Recommendation from the Superintendent for Future Programming. And then prioritize capital items. And then moving down to Student Activity Bank reconciliations and approval of clubs at AHS, AMS, and approval of related stipends, including the AHS Public Speaking, the AHS Environmental Club, the AHS International Guidance Stipend, the AHS Chess Club, the AHS Video Club, the AHS Fitness and Conditioning, AMS Newspaper, and AMS Diversity. And then, if you will, jumping back up to the Superintendent's Draft Goals 2019-2020, the Blueprint for Continuous Student Improvement. And then, we're going to move the Appointment of MASC Voting Delegate and Discussion of Resolutions to Last, if that's okay, just in making sure that we can get to it. So next would be the Allocation of DESC Grant Funds, the Student Travel Request, David Mindes School Grade Five Outdoor Education Field Trip to Camp Borndale, the American Culture Study Plan, the Tuition Rate, and the Number of Seats Recommendation, the Director of Finance and Operations Job Description, the Director of Finance and Operations Hiring Timeline, and the Mindes School Building Project Update. And then, moving to the end, the Superintendent's Report, if there is one, the Assistant Superintendent's Report, if there is one, warrant approvals, Mrs. Bates, approval of minutes, August 13th, 2019, September 11th, 2019, acceptance of gifts, committee reports of activities, member updates, action items, and then we will adjourn. Is everybody okay with that order of business?
As long as you can replicate it.
Okay, I'm going to try. I usually have somebody kicking me on either end if I get out of line.
So my only question, I have two other questions. The building project update, are there administrative things that people aren't here for that can go after that? So if the people are interested in listening to that update, that they have the opportunity to not wait through other things that may not have an interest in.
No, I think we moved it around okay.
Okay, because that's still at the end.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's fine.
That'll be okay.
Where it is, yeah. And my other question was, didn't we, did we not officially adopt our new vision statement yet?
We didn't at the last meeting because we didn't have the actual copy in front of you.
We're doing that tonight.
We said we would bring it today, just so you had it, so you could approve it, yeah.
And then, as of our next meeting, we will be reading our new vision statement to start the evening. We're going to start with student presentations and recognitions with our Student Advisory Committee, please. Hello. I see some familiar faces.
Hi, Ms. Sossi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Hi, I'm Caroline Ellis. I'm a junior. And so, this past month of October, we had convocation, was Friday, to welcome the seniors. It was a PBIS activity with an escape room, which was pretty fun. We had homecoming this past week, where we actually beat our record for amount of tickets sold for our homecoming dance, which was set by last year. I think there were over 500 tickets sold. And then, tomorrow night, actually, is NHS induction. So the juniors will be inducted, and seniors who are in NHS go up on the stage, and they kind of sit there, and, yeah, very exciting.
Thanks, Caroline.
Hi. Hi, I'm Helen Bergyce. I'm also a junior. We also, this past week, this past Saturday, we had the PSATs at the Ashland High School for juniors, and some sophomores took it. Also, we are testing an eHole Pass in the high school. It's a system where teachers can do passes online instead of on paper where students sign out. So teachers know where students are at all times, and it just makes overall our school a safer place. We also had picture day a couple weeks ago, so.
Thanks, Helen.
Hi, Josie.
Hi, I'm Josie Kaufman. I'm also a junior. So recently, the members of our Make-A-Wish Club got back from their trip to Disney World in Florida, where they volunteered to give kids the World Village. And that was a very successful trip. We've been doing that for several years. In addition, we're coming to the end of our first term, and getting excited for Thanksgiving.
Wow.
Hi, I'm Ramin Eldam. I'm also a junior. And so, we have like some sport updates. So volleyball won 15 to 1 games this year, and made their playoffs. Football won 5 to 0, and they also made their playoffs. Golf played a 500 and went to their tournament, but they lost sadly. Also, sad, I don't know if anyone has heard, but sad last week during the pep rally, it made an announcement about the red ribbons that they put on cars, and which represents someone who went through a substance abuse time, and how he overcome it. And the red ribbons represent, to like make safe decisions. And so those were put up on all the cars in the student parking lot. And over the past week, Stand has voted on their poster, which says 72% of students will choose not to drink alcohol when out with their friends, which is a high percentage. And also tomorrow, the band is going on their Boston Symphony Hall trip for the day, where they get to listen to a real orchestra practice and rehearse for their show that is in that same night.
Thank you.
And then, I just want to add something on that. Girls soccer had their senior night last night, and I went. And it was special. It's nice to see all the girls getting celebrated.
Oh, awesome. And then Coach McKay getting Coach of the Week by the Patriots, so that was exciting as well. So, thank you, everybody. Excellent. Now, National School Development Council Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership in Learning. That's our first award of the evening. Mr. Adams?
Thank you. So let me just give some background, if you mind. The National School Development Council, we call it NESD, is a network of regional school study councils, school study councils, like the New England School Development Council. This supports excellence, equity, and continuous educational improvement. The NESD network assists hundreds of schools and school districts nationwide in becoming high-performance organizations. The criteria for this award, and there's two of them this evening, the NESD award is presented to high school seniors who, in the superintendent's opinion, have consistently pursued a high level of academic effort, and who have also served as positive role models for the student body. Recipients of the award exemplify admirable character and accomplishment. I have two awards this evening, and we like to present it early on, so there's an opportunity for students to use this information in their resumes, as well as their applications to college. And the first award for academic growth and student leadership in learning is Lilly Helen.
Most importantly.
And the second award for academic growth and student leadership in learning is EJ Smither. And the final award this evening is actually, comes from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. And the superintendents in each district around the Commonwealth have an opportunity to present an award to a senior student who exemplifies a number of characters. But the criteria is a three-year cumulative average, their rank in the class, a personal selection by the superintendent. And also, for me, it's an opportunity to have great conversation with Ms. N. Kerr, the counseling staff at the high school, and to really make sure that the individual we're choosing truly is representative of the core values of the high school, of the district, and continues to give back. And this year, I am presenting the superintendent award to Rachel Hopkins. And for those, Lilly, EJ, if you want to leave, you're more than welcome to. You don't have to stick around, or you're welcome to. Exactly. That's part of the academic piece that you accomplished, so, thank you, congrats.
Nice to see you. Congratulations. So, next, we typically do some moments for a public comment. Is there anybody here who's hoping to comment tonight? Because if there are, and it's on the Mindes Educational Programming, we can do that after Mr. Adams makes his presentation, since we haven't heard it yet. So, first I'll ask if anybody wants to comment now, but if you want to comment specifically on that, I'll just ask you to wait until after the presentation, if that's okay. All right, anybody now? No? All right. Moving forward to the Mindes Educational Programming Recommendation from Superintendent for Future Program.
This one's working, we're hoping. Success for the first time in, I think, 12 meetings. It's coming. So, let me preface the conversation with the process that we are undertaking here with regard to this conversation, but also for the communities to understand the process I'm asking you to undertake. So this evening specifically, I'll be presenting to you a recommendation on the future programming of the David Mindes Elementary School. And as such, you have not seen this recommendation, you have not seen this presentation, and for the community, we've added another school committee meeting, which is next Wednesday, the 30th here, same spot. And at that point, obviously, the recommendation will be public, and there'll be an opportunity, specifically at that meeting, to really have good dialogue. And typically with the public speak, the conversation that occurs is because you've seen the information, or it's been public knowledge already. I would also encourage those who can't make any meetings to email the chair, and the email address is on the website, with your thoughts and comments, so she can read those publicly as well. So, for about two years, we've been in this process of looking at academic opportunity and equitable opportunities for our schools. And we focused a year-plus ago, by having Dr. Maureen Cohen come in and do a really in-depth review of our programs. And I wanted to start, however, with this mission, the mission of a school. And as you can see at the bottom, this was the mission that was written in 2000, specifically for the multi-age program, or for some of the community of the neighborhood program. And I just left the insert. Obviously, I put insert there, it says the Mindes School, or the Neighborhood School, in the actual documents. And the blank "School seeks to provide a nurturing environment in which to develop the talents of learners. As a community, we learn from each other and about each other. Working together, we will develop an enrichment approach to learning enhanced by exposure to libraries, museums, experiments, technology, and of course, books. Recognizing individual learning styles, different needs, diverse backgrounds, and personalities, we will endeavor to spark a lifelong love of learning. Considering students' interests and creative talents, we will provide opportunities to pursue independent, self-directed learning while creating enjoyable learning environments. As a result, students will share and exhibit products that reflect the process of their learning to other members of the community. And lastly, striving to create a balance between enjoyment and hard work, student achievement will be recognized, validated, and celebrated. As a talent developer of all children, our ultimate goal will be to create a joy of learning, a gift that continues throughout life." When I read that, and as I was looking at this, my future recommendation to you, and thinking about the couple-year process that we've undertaken to get to this point, I reread this, and I reread this, and I wanted to include it tonight, because guess what? That right there should be the mission of every single one of our schools, not a single program, but every one of our schools, and every program that exists within our schools should embody this. I truly believe that. And 20 years ago, this may have been on the forefront of learning, this may have been what was considered innovative learning, but what I would say today, 20 years later, this is what's expected learning. This is what is, to me, good teaching across all grade levels and programs. So what have we done today? So, last year, we had a presentation at the beginning of the year, January, February timeframe, with Dr. Maureen Cohen, who had spent a year reviewing the academic programs at Mindes, looking mostly at equitable opportunity for all of our kids. And I just pulled some of the pieces out of her presentation, about the programs themselves. Self-selected nature drives the inequities around the multi-age program not being representative of overall school population. We've had this conversation here numerous times, that the inequity exists getting into the program, not because it's an opt-in, and many families are uncomfortable and are not quite sure. Mr. Kyra, since he's been the principal, has reserved spots within that program and tried to do more outreach with our, you know, populations that haven't typically been inside the neighborhood program. Once students are admitted into the multi-age programming, there's no mechanism for transitioning out until the three years is up. So once you're in, you're in. If someone moves into the community, they can't get in. So there's opportunity gaps that do exist. Curriculum in multi-age is not taught in sequential order. I want to be really clear, they teach all the frameworks. It's just not necessarily in sequential order. So if a student does leave our community to go to another district, they may not have all of the third grade curricula at that time, when they go to fourth grade, maybe in another community. It's not, I want to be really clear, they do teach all of the frameworks. The role modeling of multi-age is a wonderful benefit and creates a more positive climate. That was really clear in the study. I couldn't agree more. Grade two teachers, in speaking with them, often struggle with how to discuss with parents the differences in the programs, and that still exists today. They're not quite sure how they recommend, or what they should be recommending, for each child in a family, as they transition and matriculate into the Mindes School. And the school within a school model represents numerous challenges for scheduling and creating a unified building. Those were some of the comments that came out of that report, and I would ask that, if anyone's interested, before they comment, or come next week, the report is online, it's been there since January. So please take it up to you to read that. I think you'll find it interesting with some of the information. And lastly, over the summer, we spent two days as part of a school committee retreat, and we invited Dr. Kyra and Ms. Bennett, the administrative team from the Mindes School, in to have a really thoughtful dialogue. And I'll publicly state, and we have before, I want to thank Rachel, you gave us some tremendous insight, as a former Mindes student, and, you know, neighborhood student, all of those things were really helpful to us. And so, thank you for that, and having the courage to just speak from a student's perspective. It's fantastic.
She's the first student to join us on our retreat.
Right, first time.
During the summer, coming in for the whole day, that was great.
So, what really came out of those conversations, right? The belief is that we need a school which incorporates the best of the single-age programming with the original intent and mission that I read earlier, of the multi-age program. Continued lack of interest has resulted in reducing one classroom in the multi-age. This year, we had continuing decline of the number of students who are looking to get into the program. An elementary school that focuses on skill-based groupings with consistency in the vertical and horizontal curriculum, while providing equitable opportunities for each and every child. That's what we're looking for.
Jim, can I ask you maybe to just explain what the vertical and horizontal curriculum, what that terminology means?
So, and I'll defer to Mike to how it works in Mindes currently. Ms. Kyra, would you want to come up and speak to that? I mean, I can speak to it in general, but I think it's important with Mindes.
I'm just more interested in making sure the community understands what those terminologies mean.
Yep.
So essentially, our vertical curriculum is what happens from three through five, and the conversations that happen between our different grade-level teachers and teams. And then horizontally, it's the work that is done within a grade level, per se. So all fifth graders would be receiving the same basic education, because we're following the same frameworks, and all fourth graders horizontally would be working. So the vertical curriculum is our school, really, at this point, K through five, or pre-K through five, I should say, and then horizontally, it's just within grade level.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And that goes back to the comment I was making earlier, with regard to the curriculum as it's being taught currently in the neighborhood, isn't necessarily, third graders aren't getting third grade, right? So there's some vertical, but not always the horizontal. The differences in pedagogy, so teaching methods, et cetera, between the multi-age and single-age programs are minimal. That's what we're uncovering. Many of the innovative teaching methods of the multi-age program from 20 years ago are just common practice today, in all classrooms. And the next slide came directly out of the report as well. And I think it's an important slide, because when we talk about the differences of programming, and trying to really create one elementary school that embodies both of the programs, if you just look in this chart, again, this presentation will also be online tomorrow, how we teach, on the left is a single grade, on the right would be the multi. I flipped my language up top, but that's how it's presented in the report. You can see we're doing the same things, right? We're teaching similarly. 20 years ago, this was not the case. So, with this being said, in taking all of the data that I've received, to think long and hard about the conversations we've had, my recommendation, moving forward, for you to consider, for our next for you to consider for our next meeting to have discussion on for the community, I've asked the school committee by November, on the November 13th meeting to have, take it up as a vote. There's no, I'm not asking you to do any voting tonight. I'm giving you my recommendation so there can be really good, healthy dialogue from the community. But also having Dr. Kyra and Ms. Bennett here and Rachel and the input that people have given us, is to do the following. Phase out the multi-age program and create a single age program across the entire school by 2022, 2023 school year. Work to create a modeling program that allows for older students to mentor younger students. That was critically important in the, in everything I've heard. The mentoring piece is really powerful stuff. We have to find ways to keep that and embed that across the entire building. Focus on skill-based grouping versus level-based groupings. And work towards building a culture that incorporates the best of both programs into, and I did highlight this on purpose, one united Mindes where everyone is rowing in the same direction. Two S's up there, right? Mindes, I gave one extra, I know. But that's, you know, that's where I am today. This is how strongly I feel about, feel about creating a building that is consistent across grade levels, that is, again, unified. And I think from a climate and a culture standpoint in reading everything, this will certainly help. On a side note, there's a piece that as we continue on with the school building project, we actually have a document that we have to prepare for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA, about our educational programming. And what does that look like to actually create a building? If we were to build a new building, what does it look like? And so we have to actually have some, you know, some definitive answers to that. And your, your group, the board, has to have some definitive answers to help determine what a building will look like, whether we have and continue on with the model that we currently have or a new model and what that looks like for groupings, for design of a facility. Those are critically important and those have to be done by December. That's why that November 13th timeframe is important. Initial questions and?
Questions for Mr. Adams before we open it up to public comment.
So just one thing, because I think this is an important clarification. We've had a lot of discussions, so I think I know what that first bullet means.
Yeah.
But how it's phrased, it can be taken in a different way. So what it meant from our, our discussions is the phasing out of the multi-age structure.
Correct.
Right, not the program as a whole. What we're looking to do is incorporate the different things that are going on there, but the, to remove the challenge of the structure that, that causes some of the challenges you're talking about before. So I think just making sure that it's clear that the way it's worded, it sounds like we're taking and removing it, but we're trying to take the?
So it's structural, right, for sure. But, but let me even clarify that even further. So what I would say is, in the incoming class next year, the third grade class, we would not be offering seats in the multi-age program. So you would then have two more years, the current third graders and the current fourth graders would continue on in that model, in that structure, until they are out of the Mindes School and into the middle school. Right? That's what I meant, what I mean by phasing the process. Yeah.
So more on the logistics of that, there'd be no lottery in the spring for the, for this second grade class and the incoming third graders.
Correct, there hasn't been.
And then as you have your population shrinking in that neighborhood, you'd be reallocating teachers to a single age, but you would then be building probably partnership models.
Right. So, so, right, so, so I think we're jumping so far ahead of where we need to be. Until a decision is made by the board, what we are going to do, I would then want to sit with the team at, at Mindes and really determine what the process would be and what it looks like. I think you have to understand as well that there's potential costs of adding another teacher into the mix as well. You know, the, the multi-age, when I've done just the sheer looking at volume of numbers, I believe we'll have to add another staff member as well in there to meet the requirements of 22, 23 kids, as kids are coming up, bigger classes as well.
I think, I mean, I think where Paul and Aaron's questions are really going and I was going to ask some questions along the same lines are really helping perhaps parents who have kids in that program now understand as best we can what that's going to look like.
Yeah.
Obviously, my, my kids are out of that program now, but, but just to understand sort of what that is going to look like, what it's going to feel like for parents and I can sort of understand if you look at the bullet point, even though you look at 22, 23, you might ask yourself, so what's going to happen between now and then? So I don't know if you can, if you're pressed?
That was my initial thing because I'm going to have a child going into Mindes. I think I have the youngest child, right? Yeah, I do. And I'm going to have a child going into Mindes and I didn't know if I would be having to choose, knowing there was only one or two more years left.
Correct.
But so that's off the table.
That's correct. I mean, that was my recommendation.
Or your recommendation.
Right. And, and I think if, if you would like for us to have something prepared specifically for the next, for next week's meeting on what that looks like, absolutely. I think it's?
I think it may just be helpful because I'm sure there'll be a lot of people asking questions about, you know, we've got the frameworks that rotate, how are we going to make sure everybody comes out of?
Well, that's it.
Right. I think we understand that there's a lot of moving parts and things are going to change and it doesn't sound like everything is 100% figured out until decisions are made.
Right.
But I think in just in terms of helping us make, make the vote and having the public understand it, just some general ideas about what you're thinking in certain areas, right?
Yeah. And maybe be able to publish that in the next few days so that if somebody wants to come and comment next week, that they're not, they're not seeing that for the first time, they can have?
I will promise it'll be done by Monday. I will not promise in the next two days.
I said a few days.
Yeah, I know.
It could be any number.
Let me, you know, set the expectation.
And one thing to add to that that hasn't been mentioned is actual physical location. Because as the class, as the neighborhood size shrinks, would they still be sort of on an island on their own or would you envision mixing? But that's something to work through and?
And that's, again, I, I will always, you know me well enough, I will always defer to the principles within their buildings. I think the autonomy that exists within their building should stay within their building. I think, you know, it's, if Kelly or Mike or Dave want to make adjustments within their building, whether it's location or types of structure, we have to trust our administrators to do so, right? And to do it in a positive way that supports all kids. There, there's always going to be movement, but again, what this helps is, helps us identify and define for the MSBA project as well.
Just to channel my remark. I'm going to ask a question that I know the answer to, but focus on skill-based groupings versus level-based groupings. I, I know from our discussions, I know what that means, but for, I'm sure most of people here in the room know what it means, but for anyone listening or looking at this, really describing what that means.
And again, I, I will defer, I mean, I could speak to it, but I prefer to have Mike speak to it as it relates specifically to this conversation in Mindes itself.
So skill-based groupings are more fluid. So we are seeing a lot of skill-based grouping right now, especially in some of our third grade teams and third grade models where we have some folks that are using specific pre-tests and different assessments to determine certain groupings and then they'll do some collaborative teaching or some team teaching and some switching per se based on how students are performing on specific skills that are tested or assessed during that time period. Whereas a leveled-based grouping would be a grouping that's put together that really remains with those students for the entire year. So you would assess once in the beginning of the year and that, that would not necessarily be a fluid process. And we really would like to move towards that skill-based grouping for all of our students that allows for just, you know, a different level, a, a, a more efficient level of differentiation that's based on where kids are at that specific moment of time rather than where they necessarily were in September when we originally assessed.
And where they are after that skill or that topic.
And so as you do it different units, there might be that skilled base?
Absolutely. Yep. And, and then, you know, things could change after a mid-year assessment too per se, where we would be able to, you know, make some adjustments to specific groupings based on reading levels or, or something to that extent.
And that was the original experience that you had, right, of after a certain section, they would retest and re-level, right?
There was, I believe, one year.
Slide back to you, plug the pen a little bit. Yeah, there you go. Thanks.
There was one year where we did that, I think. I'm trying to think, I think it was for math, where we would take pre-test, post-test and then switch based on where our skills were. But for most of my experience, it was just level-based.
And, and this is something that we want to see across all, across all of our schools. So let's, let's be, let's be clear. This is not happening within the entire Mindes community, multi-grade or single grade. We, we do not have everybody doing skill-based grouping right now. This is something that we're looking to, to make sure that we are implementing as we move forward and make some really impactful changes. So it's, it's something that, you know, we aspire to for our entire, our entire student population.
Yeah, I mean, I know that a lot of the questions that, and, and one reason probably why we're jumping ahead and saying like, what's going to happen is because, and, and you said it, Mr. Adams, but reiterating again, that we've had several combined hours with Dr. Kyra and Mrs. Bennett and, and myself even longer being on the committee that was exploring it with, with Dr. Vera and the others on the committee for a long time. But I think, like a lot of our questions and concerns, just to sort of rehash a little bit for the public, we're trying to really pull out like, what's the best of everything that's happening in that building? You know, what's working well here? Or elsewhere. Right. Or, you know, why not, why limit ourselves to like what we have right now in this moment? Like this is an opportunity where we're having a new building and where we're reflecting and we're reviewing and what, what can we do to make the experience, what, the optimal experience for every student in the entire building regardless of what you call it, right? And, and, and there were things about what's going on everywhere that were not only appealing to us from a school committee point of view, but also to the educators that we were getting feedback from, which to me is the most important thing because we're not in the building. You know, we're making these policy decisions and building decisions, but you're all the ones that see how it plays out every day. So we did have a chance to really kind of explore that with you and there's, that's a little bit of a reason why we're jumping ahead and saying, okay, but so what are you going to do with all that information now moving forward?
So the one other thing, I guess I just draw out and it was something that came out in our conversations before, but hasn't been said here tonight is that this isn't, this isn't a project that's being done because of the building project that we're looking at.
Correct.
And you've been clear with us and I don't know if you want to speak to it or not, but that this is something you'd be recommending regardless of whether we're looking at a facility change or not.
That's correct. So I, I think what's important to understand is there, there are these tracks that are running parallel, right? But they don't necessarily have to cross. So if, if we were not in a position where this community doesn't support a renovation or addition or a new building for Mindes, I would clearly be recommending this program change either way. It's not about the building. The building just happens to be along this path and all of a sudden, they're going to converge at some point and we have to have that information prepared for the MSBA. But absolutely, you're spot on. We would absolutely be making this recommendation either way.
So before, if there is, we're not voting on anything this evening. So I'm not sure if there's going to be further discussion amongst the school committee or not. But this is an opportunity, if anybody wants to offer some public comment now, I'm fine with that. We will have another meeting next week just on this topic, so that's an opportunity. Writing to us is an opportunity. And then I think there will be another opportunity probably in November, I think, when there will be a vote and there's always an opportunity for public comment at every single meeting. So just so that everybody here understands if there's something that you want to say, those are the different points in time or ways to do that. So I'll, I'll put it out there now. If anybody wants to come up, now's the time.
I want Mike to make one correction.
I, I just want to make sure that I make one sort of correction in terms of something that I think is important to state.
Yeah.
There has been, there have been instances and opportunities where at times we have made decisions to bring a new student into the multi-grade program. That has actually happened this school year. So there have been certain instances. It specifically happened a couple of times this year because it's been offered us the opportunity to assist in allowing certain students who do not speak English as their first language, some non-English students, to be able to come in because the, the services that were being provided were best capable or ability of us to provide them were within the context of, of the multi-grade program. We do talk to parents before then to let them know that there could be a gap because of what's happening. But in these specific instances, you know, we've, we've made, we've made some, we've, we've made the move. There was one other time that it happened this year as well where a parent actually requested it. And we told that parent also about the potential for gaps. And this particular parent said, I'm, I'm not concerned about those gaps. This is where I would like my child to be. So I do want to make sure that I clarify that.
Right, because it's on here somewhere about, has that been something?
Yeah, and that's, you know, it certainly hasn't been the norm over the course of the years, but it has happened this year. And a lot too has to do with the fact that we've had a, a large population of fourth graders move in this year and we had a small population of fourth graders in the multi-grade program. And we've been able to, you know, have some students go in particularly for fourth grade. Okay? I just felt it was important to, to make sure we brought that to your attention.
Mike, have you had the chance to get any like feedback from parents? Because we do know that the, for whatever reason, the interest is not what it might have been in other years. And do we have any feedback from the parent point of view on what that might be about?
Not a ton. Some parents, I took a lot of phone calls last year from parents actually, asking about, you know, the future of, of the program. And folks were concerned about, about that.
Yeah.
So I think that based upon maybe some of the, the questions in the community about where we're going, knowing that there was a study being done.
Yeah.
That, you know, folks may have made a decision based on the, the, the lack of assuredness of what was going to be happening in the future. So I did get some of that. Otherwise, not a whole lot, not a whole lot of feedback from, from parents. Yeah, those were, those were the, the few questions that I, that I answered. And I just told parents that, like them, I wasn't aware of what the recommendation was going to be at that point either, that we had just done the study. And, and I did assure them that if there were a recommendation made such as this one tonight, that we would have a very thoughtful dialogue and a thoughtful conversation about the phase out. And I assured them that if their child was starting as a third grader, and I think this is important to kind of bring back, to circle back to what was discussed earlier, is that we would make sure that all of the frameworks and all of the needs and all of the, the, the curricular responsibilities from our school district standpoint were met for each of these children. And because we run it on a three-year cycle, we'll make sure that that's done thoughtfully and that's done carefully. There were certain aspects that the students would ultimately miss out on, you know, like being the fifth grade leader, but there's something, that's a challenge that comes in with, with this potential change where we're going to have to think about how we make that possible for these current third graders so they still have that opportunity, whether or not it be through a shared classroom or we partner up fifth grade classrooms with third grade classrooms to allow students to have that mentorship opportunity. Because it was so clear in Dr. Cohen's study, and so clear with talking to, to folks that that is one of the, the greatest strengths of the multi-grade program is the ability for our student leaders to, to shine and for them to be mentors. So those things, those things will happen, they'll just have to happen creatively. And we'll have to make sure that we make the time for that stuff.
Jim, I have, I have one more question and it relates to similar things that he was talking about. I know with the, with how two of the subjects are taught on, on that cycle, that every third year they actually are on the normal, you know, you know, third graders getting third grade curriculum every third year. Is this phase out aligning that, to that or is it, or is it?
So that's not necessarily the, the case, Mr. Kendall. So what's going to happen is every, every three years, the students are taught the entire three through five curriculum. So these particular, if, if the phase out is done, if the phase out is done in a thoughtful manner where it's, where it's, this is 19, 20, 20, 21, 21, 22. And 21, 22, the current third graders will have received all of the, all of the curriculum that they need. And they'll be the only ones in that cohort. So we'd have to figure out how to make sure that those kids remain to- cohort. So, we'd have to figure out how to make sure that those kids remain together as fifth graders. So, that would become a fifth grade classroom of sort. But I, there, there hasn't been a whole lot of conversation or, or, or planning done in that. It's just thinking in the back of my head, that's what would need to be done to make sure that, A, they remained with the group that they had been with, uh, with some of their peers, and B, to make sure that they're receiving the three years that they are required to receive in terms of the social studies in particular, in, in, in science. And that'll be part of what we come up with for Monday. From Monday, I guess.
Any other discussion or questions at this particular time?
I mean, in terms of our deliberations going forward, it seems like if that was just to receive this tonight and then a more public comment next time, we have the more dialogue and deliberation at that point.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have anything further for tonight?
So, you're, we're thinking more deliberations for next, next week?
Well, we have, the next meeting is dedicated like entirely to, to this topic.
Okay.
Because by then, we'll have some, hopefully have some additional input to consider. Um, and we can also hear your response to some of the concerns about moving forward, and we have a chance to formulate more of our own questions. I mean, I, I think, again, many of us have stated publicly along the way, meaning in, in our meetings, but which none of you were there, but just the things that were important to us to make sure that, uh, we still see them, like the mentoring, like the, you know, the differentiation and the kinds of things that, that make the program so successful. So, maybe a better understanding of how, how you think that might look. We know that you haven't really had the opportunity to plan it out because you've been evaluating the program. So, I would imagine by the next meeting, we'll be able to talk about some of that stuff and then a vote in the first meeting in November?
November.
Yeah. So, that's the, that's the layout, the timeframe, and, um, that's it, right?
That's all I had.
My only worry is I may not be here next meeting. I have to go to Kansas City for work, and I don't know if it's Tuesday and I'm missing a, a child's conference or if I'm missing Wednesday.
Well, the vote is not at the next meeting, so I would definitely suggest, like, either get me any questions or concerns you might have ahead of time that I can ask on your behalf.
Okay, that would be great.
Watch the meeting after, so that when you come to the meeting in November, you'll have all the information.
Okay, okay.
We're not just voting, that, we'll, we'll be able to have deliberations.
Correct, right. There's two more meetings that fully have potential for deliberation, absolutely.
Right. And, 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 and just so everybody else knows, if anyone plans to reach out to me, what I will do is I'll share that information with everybody else on the board, so I'm not the only person that's seeing your concern. Though, they, they will all see it as well. So, you'll have a chance, if I do get anything, you'll see that, and so you'll have a chance to reflect on whatever comes your way. Okay? We good?
Do we comment about anonymous persons?
Yeah, that's the other thing. We do have a policy that if, um, anything comes into us and it's anonymous, we can't entertain it. So, um, anything that you do want to say, you do need to sign your name to it, and it's probably also better, um, if each person sort of writes their own perspective rather than one thing signed by fifty people. Uh, that's my personal preference. There's no policy about that. But, um, just so that we can, you know, get an idea of, of hearing your voice and, and hearing what your perspective is, and then I can in turn share that with everybody else, and that will help us when we have a, have to take a vote. Okay? All right. So, Mrs. Durant, we're gonna move to you, starting with prioritizing the capital items. Thank you.
Um, so, um, I am here tonight to, um, ask you to prioritize the FY twenty-one new capital that will be, that has been submitted to the town. Um, and we will, over the next month or so, be having meetings with them to look at the school capital request and all the town capital requests and putting them together in one list. Um, but in advance of asking you to look at this year's, I thought I, I wanted to kind of create a framework for what we already have out there. So, this year, I did give you, um, the first sheet in your packet, are projects that we currently have approved and funded, um, in FY nineteen and twenty, and what we anticipate will be approved in the November town meeting. Um, these are all school projects that we currently have on our plate. I will tell you, they are overwhelming a bit. Um, Joe has been working very hard on these. You have to realize, he's also director of facilities for the town, so he's also trying to work on their projects. So, we have discovered this year that maybe there's a few too many on our plate at one time, and so next year, um, for two reasons, kind of slowing down and making sure we can finish all the projects that we get approved, but also the town's looking at the funding of the capital and maybe a reduction in the amount of capital that's gonna be available town-wide next year. Um, so, any questions on the projects we currently have?
So, are you talking about potentially in the future, you know, having less on the plate or taking something off, off of this plate?
Um, nothing will be taken off this plate.
Okay, and, and, 'cause, 'cause if, if it was, then I'm like, okay, what does that mean for the funding?
It's, it's future, yeah.
Those, those are already funded. Um, the change in the amount of money that will be available comes into play for the next sheet, which is this capital we've already submitted, but it has not yet been funded. These projects were already given to the town. They were kind of put in placeholder positions. Um, the town also has all of their projects, um, on their list, and I have been asked by the assistant town manager to look at this list of projects, what we have here in twenty-one, and see if there's anything we can take off the plate, uh, for funding for next year. So, those discussions are just beginning with the town. I'm meeting with her next week.
Now, is there a, a dollar figure to try to target to take off, or...
So, um, what we've done the last few years is, at the May town meeting, there's general fund money, they call it pay-as-you-go, um, of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, we're being told that next year, that will be five hundred thousand dollars. Now, that's town-wide. But there's also some projects that are then funded by debt, and then at the fall town meeting, there's a percentage of your free cash that gets allocated out to capital, but we don't know what that dollar amount is until we know what the free cash number is. So, all I know for sure right now is the May town meeting capital is being reduced from seven fifty to five hundred thousand.
Do we know why?
It's part of the public safety building.
Oh, okay.
Funding for future building projects in town.
But, and, and I guess what my, my point was, my question was actually more pointed at, when asked to look at the list and see what could come off, was there any target given, or just, hey, we need to reduce, see what can come off?
Um, the request was just, can you look at your list and see what can be removed? And I answered back, "I'm only seeing the sc- the school piece. I'd really like to see the town piece. Can we just get together and talk about it as one whole view?" And so, that's what we're gonna do next week.
And then we'll have more information after that, yeah.
And, and, and that's something that you, I, I was, you know, I, I, you, you did it last year, uh, everybody sat together and it was really, really great.
It, it works well.
And, and so, yeah, that's, that's gonna happen again this year. That's great.
Right. Um, and then the, the final page is the new request. Um, there are fifteen items on the list. Um, working with Joe, we kind of spaced them out over some, the five-year capital plan. Um, the ones in twenty-twenty-one, I don't have as much hope and expectation that we'll be able to fund these as I did when we put the list together. Um, I do want to talk about the school Chromebook replacement as the top priority because it's gonna come up again in the DESI grant conversation. Um, we have just discovered that Google will no longer update Chromebooks after six years. Um, within the next four years, all of our Chromebooks in the district will meet that time limit. Um, so, this year, um, Paul has seventy-five thousand dollars in capital. He'll use that to replace some Chromebooks. We need the money from the DESI grant that you'll be looking at later to replace an additional five hundred Chromebooks this year. And then, over the next two years, we need additional funding to replace the remainder. We have about two thousand Chromebooks across the district, which is what the students use for MCAS testing.
And that, and that, you need to highlight that piece.
That's the key. We, we don't have a choice there. We, we need that.
We need to have the functioning Chromebooks that can actually take the test.
Yeah.
How many do we think we need to be able to fulfill that purpose?
Well, you've got six hundred and sixty-one students at Mendez. You've got six hundred and sixty-one students at the middle school.
But they're not all taking the test in the same day, are they?
Um, some are. Some are taking during the same time period. Um, and you've got all the sophomores, two hundred plus at the high school. Uh, we currently have, remember Claudia Top had how many, you've got almost one-to-one at, at Mendez?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, they are, and, and then also the, you know, the, the day-to-day usage as well, um, so...
No, I'm, I'm not, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves and, and voice any opposition to it. Just, it's, it's a lot of money. It's gonna be something that has to be done over time, and I want to make sure we're, you know, we've, we started a conversation years ago about what we want to do in terms of one-to-one, and, and State kind of fixed it for us, like, more or less compelling it, or close to that. Um, but they are fairly light and easy to move and, and, um, you know, I don't know how many people take the MCAS on any given day, but I suspect it's not all of them the same day.
Uh, well, it's definitely grade level.
Yeah.
So, it could be, it's money is for, I mean, you get a two hundred and twenty at Mendez and two hundred plus at the, and then transfer, and, and then transportation of getting them to each locale.
Yeah, but you're talking about four hundred and so two thousand is my, my point, whether it's six hundred.
Well, I, no, I understand your point. Uh, I'm, that, but that's just for the testing piece, right? It's not for the everyday use either, so...
Right, and I, I think that's important to know, that, um, the MCAS testing is leading this charge, but also with all the Chromebooks aging out at six years, there's not gonna be any support for whatever we want to do with them.
And it's, yeah, to me, it's more a question of the timing on it and how, how many we have to do, how quickly, type of thing, but...
So, um, between, um, the capital money, um, Paul has and the DESI grant, we'll be looking at replacing about eight hundred and fifty this year. Um, and then, yeah, there's another twelve hundred over the next two years. Okay. Um, so, the new request for the capital, the Chromebooks are our fir-, is, is our recommendation for top priority. Um, the other items, um, we can have a discussion, what you feel would be your priorities. Um, we don't, you, you don't take a vote to set the priority because when we go into that group, um, it may be a juggle of, maybe our second priority is fifty thousand dollars, but there's only twenty thousand available. Can you put something else in?
Right.
You know, it, it's a puzzle.
You need the flexibility when you're having that negotiation.
Right, so, we certainly want your recommendations, so I know what to go in fighting for, looking for.
Right.
But I, I need some flexibility in that group.
Can I just ask one question on the, um, starts already submitted and reviewed?
Yeah.
Um, remind me what the situation is with the pitway roof. Assume that's something we absolutely have to do, and that is not gonna last until we potentially have a new building online and it could be...
So, um, so right now, it's in for FY twenty-two for five hundred thousand dollars. Um, I would anticipate that depending on the outcome of the S, MSBA projects, we'll have a better idea of the outcome of that building and whether or not we have to do some repairs to get it through the next few years, or whether we have to really replace the whole roof.
Is that the replacement cost, the five hundred, or is that the repair cost?
Um, that's the replacement, um, as, that was two years ago, so it probably needs to be adjusted a little bit, but two years ago when we put it on the plant.
That, that's, uh, somewhat up in the air.
Right, right.
'Cause that was my, on the new requests, you've got two line items for pitway and the fascia repair and paint, and that was my thought as well, is like, why are we putting that sort of money into that building?
Um...
Into where, into pitway?
It's, it's, it's gonna be a number of years. There are some things that need to be kept up a little bit.
Well, and, and, and it also depends, right? So, um, that building project determines what are the solutions are for the needs we have for, uh, our either two through five or three through five kids. Um, what then happens is, whatever those options are, if pitway is no longer needed in that capacity, that doesn't mean that that dollar amount isn't needed. If the town then as a whole decides that that building is still gonna be there and used in some other capacity. So, um, if you're looking at it from that lens, understand that these, all these dollars are the community as a whole, right? It's, you know, they're, they're school-related right now, uh, and, but, you know, especially with the collaboration that's been going on the past, you know, now two years, gonna be the, you know, this year. Um, you know, those dollar amounts, they might not be labeled as a school when they happen if, if, if a project occurs, but unless the town says we're demoing it, uh, and if they are demoing it, well, then guess what? That's probably, just doesn't say roof, it says demo.
Demo.
Uh, so, that, that probably doesn't go away regardless of the outcome of the, the project, right? So, if that project happens, we're no longer using it as a, a preschool, then I think if we're gonna continue to use it, that's gonna need to be replaced.
It still, it still would be a town building.
Uh, or if we're demoing it. Well, there's a demo cost to that, so...
We wouldn't be selling this ever?
Uh, that's a board of selectmen decision.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, the process would be, once we're no longer using it, the care and custody would turn back over to the town.
So, Barbara and I have been having conversations the last couple of days. You know, I'm trying to, to get a fix on the true cost to keep pitway open, right, uh, in terms of the facility itself. So, that's important to know, that number, as we move forward, because it will impact the decision the community makes with regard to a two-five building, a three-five building. If, if we're running, opening, if pitway is, is costing the district under a hundred thousand dollars a year to, to run, to keep open, you know, what's the cost benefit of, of giving that up versus, so, those are things we're looking at, uh, as well. It's not as significant as you think to actually keep the facility. We, we've already started that analysis. It's not as significant as you think to keep that building open, um, financially.
Okay, 'cause a couple of years ago, it was in the list of the top ten worst performers of, um, consumption of electricity and gas.
Understood, but in terms of our, I, it, that's a different conversation with, in terms of sustainability and...
Efficiency and all that, yeah.
Efficiency and so on.
But that's a spend, too.
It is, but in terms of, even if it's the least efficient building in the Commonwealth, is it still cheaper for us to have that, or less expensive to have that than it is to have another ten million dollars added to a facility? I, I don't know. We don't, that's...
Yeah. It, 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 it's just data points, and we will, as a community, determine what we value.
Right, yep.
Do we, do we value that economic piece of it? Uh, do we, sustainability, or what's the balance between those two?
Yeah.
Um, so, um, the, the other priority for FY twenty-one is on the list that's already been, um, submitted, the modular lease at the Warren School. This will be the final payment for those four classrooms.
Yes.
And actually, that can be reduced to about fifty-four thousand because they, we don't have to pay the, um, takedown cost.
Right.
So, the full buyout, um, will be in FY twenty-one for about fifty-four thousand dollars.
That's the first four, or is that correct?
The first four.
And just to refresh my memory, get in mind on where we are with the couple...
Those were paid, those were paid for this year. Oh, oh, right. We own them.
So, that whole, now that whole corridor will be ours, yeah.
So, on your new request list, number thirteen, Warren Modular Rehab, is that for the...
So, that's the four that we've owned for five years now, so that'll be seven years, and Joe's just anticipating that it'll need a little refreshing.
Yeah, that's what I figured, okay.
Look at the roof, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments?
I guess I'm just, um, what, what are you looking for from us?
So, I was just gonna, I was gonna circle back to that.
So, so, I'm looking to move forward with the modular lease payment, which is required, but the school Chromebook replacement as our first priority.
From the other list.
And then, um, so this year, we have carpet replacement in rooms two fifteen and two thirty-three. That's middle school. That's kind of health issues, so I'd like to move, push that. That's why it's at the top of the list.
Yeah.
Um, the Warren School courtyards, we don't have a price for the, um, uh, the principal is looking to, um, put in a rubberized, um, flooring in both the courtyards out there, make it usable space for playtime, uh, before school, after school, um, and eliminate some of the, um, moisture and weeds that we're having issues with in the classrooms. But we don't have a price for that, and that's not something I think we can put forward for next year.
Five and seven, DW, what is DW there?
District-wide parking lot painting. Um, and six, the athletic storage shed. Um, this comes up every single year. Um, Athletic Department does not have enough space to store all their equipment because they took the storage room and made it a weight room. Um, uh, so, we have put it on the list. Um, I'm more comfortable, I've asked Joe to have a conversation with Keith Tech to see about them. It would just cost us supplies to have... to have, um, Keefe Tech come in and build a storage shed, um, in the courtyard of the high school.
In the courtyard of the high school?
Uh, maybe the courtyard, um, over near where? What?
Back of the gym.
The backside of the gym.
Oh.
Yeah.
Tucked in on the side of the building.
That, that was originally where you could add on to that facility, if you wanted to add the preschool.
Oh, yeah.
Remember the preschool there, Claudia's courtyard? That's where the preschool was supposed to be.
So you're looking for consensus on the list?
Just consensus.
And also, just with the understanding that you, you were probably gonna get to the first couple, and then after that, it has to do with what's left for money after you've sat down with the town, and their priorities are also considered.
Right.
So it's really just a matter of if there's something on this list that you're not uncomfortable with where it's been placed, or whatever, you can speak up now. Otherwise, just looking to let us know.
If there's something on the list that you really felt strongly about and you wanted me to push it up higher, then that's what I'm looking for.
Well, I mean, you haven't, you haven't readjusted the priority of the list, right? Cause Warren is still listed as, the Warren courtyard is still listed as three, but you're, that was, sounds like it's one of the, would be one of the first, even if you had a number to go, right?
Um, it would be, I put it number three because again, it's health. And, and I was kind of looking for those health issues that we wanted to address. But the cost, given, um, the monetary restraints we're gonna have next year, I don't see us gonna be able to do it next year.
I, I, I just have a que- question on the Chromebooks, uh, thing, so, uh, I understand when you have the money, you gotta use it, but I'd also caution us on essentially creating the same problem in the future, as opposed to getting us on a six-year cycle where we're only replacing one-sixth of the Chromebooks, right? If we, if we had money, we replaced all of them right now, we're just essentially saying in six years.
It was projected out.
But, but that's why each year, so the next two years, it's higher to play catch-up, and then after that, a hundred thousand each year as part of the capital should allow us to do revolving replacement of all the Chromebooks.
Okay, so, I, I guess that's where, or maybe that's the part of the DESI grant, and so it's not listed here.
Correct.
You said, you talked about doing, you know,
In a me.
all two thousand in the next two years, but I see, I see only a thirty-two thousand dollar difference, uh, in those, so that's where I was.
No, in FY twenty-one, we already have, in FY twenty, we already have seventy-five thousand and the DESI grant. And then in twenty-one and twenty-two, we need the additional one thirty-twos to do the remainder of the Chromebooks.
Okay, well, but, I mean, I see the dollar, but I also, it's one of those things, like those dollars can be in there, but if we replace two, all two thousand in the next two years, we've not spaced it out so that they're gonna be replaced one-sixth of the meta-time. If we're replacing all two thousand.
Understood.
In, in the next two years.
It'll be a three, the, the next two thousand will be replaced in three years, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Um, has that been pushed forward a little bit? Yes, because we have the DESI money. Um, if we didn't have the DESI money, we probably could go out four years.
Okay.
But because we do have that money this year, we pushed it forward and then started the rotation in the fourth year.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure we're, we're looking forward to, because while we have that money and we can do that, are we causing a more of an issue down, issue, issue down the road where, you know, from a, from a life cycle replacement perspective, four years is better than three.
But we don't, we don't even know.
It looks like it's planned, it's planned out, yeah.
We also don't know what Google's gonna do in the future. They could phase out support after three years, next time around, too, right? Or twelve.
That'd be nice.
Go with them.
Right?
Uh, Barbara, the only, the only general comment, I think it's probably apparent from both Erin's questions and mine, are, you know, just being wary of, of putting money into buildings that we may or may not be using, and, you know, some things I know we're gonna have to do um, along the way, and that has to be done, it has to be done. But, you know, even as I was looking at the, like, the line painting, uh, painting district-wide, like, I'm not worried about line painting at Mendez if it's, you know, even if it's two grand.
Right, but with start at, at the high school, it's in dire need of some line painting.
Right.
And, and you're seeing these on the plan, they've been there for a couple of years, and when we meet as a group, I keep saying, oh yeah, push that one back.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not cast in stone that that's the year that we intended it. I still want it on the list, I don't want to take it off yet. But as we meet as a group, it, I, we can push that off and not have it in this year's conversation.
And, and we need to pick and choose because it can be a safety issue, too, right? So particularly at places like Mendez where you have traffic patterns and pedestrians and having some better lines sometimes, it, it's definitely worth that investment.
I'm wary of the lipstick kind of pig, kind of thing.
Totally get that.
And not looking, not looking to do that for safety or structural purposes, or to make the building work better for, for Mike and the group all for it, but, but, like I said, I suspect you took that without us saying it anyway.
So I think I have a good feel for, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything.
Thanks for.
And then we're gonna pop down to student activity, bank reconciliations.
Um, so, um, we have reconciled, um, the student activity accounts for our four schools, um, Warren, Mendez, Middle and High School for April, May, and June twenty nineteen. Those reconciliations are in the business office, they've been reviewed by, um, the staff that did the reconciliation, by myself, the building principal has signed off on it. Um, we need a vote of the school committee to authorize the secretary to sign off on the reconciliations.
Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
We should probably read the, read the motion, right?
Would you like to read this?
Move to approve the FY nineteen student activities account, bank reconciliations for the period of April one, twenty nineteen through June thirty, twenty nineteen, as presented.
All seconded?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Could that climb the shorter?
And then the approval of the clubs, um, Ashland High School, Ashland Middle School, and related stipends.
Um, so, we're gonna break it down into two different categories. Um, there are two new clubs and one new stipend that are not currently part of the teacher's contract, so we need you to approve the club and the stipend and the, um, the dollar amount for the stipend. We do have an MOU with the teachers' union that we have agreed to, and it, once you vote, it will be signed, um, to make these part of the teacher's contract. The first one is the public speaking club at the high school. They meet once a week, um, so the stipend would be one thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Uh, at the high school, there's also an environmental club this year, again, they meet once a week, one thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And then a stipend for the guidance counselor that gets assigned all of the international students. We're finding there's a bit more workload, um, with these students, um, and so we structured it based on how many students we have that year, um, that the guidance counselor is working on. Right now, we have seven, um, you'll see later, we're asking you to vote for seven again next year. Um, but if we got six, the stipend will be lower next year than it is this year. Um, so this is a stipend for them to do the extra duties, um, of the international students, and it'll be paid for out of the international tuitions.
Okay.
So those are the clubs, we need you to approve the club and the stipend.
Okay, so let's do that, the motion first, the first motion to approve the, uh, activities, student activities clubs at Ashland High School and Ashland Middle School as presented.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And then the, uh, second section is clubs that already exist in the contract, we just haven't funded them for a number of years. Uh, they've been reactivated, renewed interest. Um, so the high school has renewed the chess club, the stipend is listed at nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. Uh, the video club at the high school is listed at nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. The fitness and conditioning club is to put a teacher in the weight room before and after school, supervising the students. That stipend is one thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars per season, for three seasons, we don't fund the summer. Um, the middle school newspaper club, one thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and the middle school diversity club, six hundred and thirty-four dollars. So we just need you to approve the stipends.
So those stipends are in the contract, they just haven't been funded?
Correct.
So we're basically voting to appropriate money to fund that, and we have the money?
We do, out of salary savings with new staff.
Okay, we need a motion to approve stipends for student activity club advisors as presented.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
We gotta keep going.
That's a good one.
Can I continue with the DESI grant?
Yep.
Okay.
What else have we got?
The allocation of the Department of Ed.
Thank you, Kelly.
Good night, Kelly.
Good night, Kelly.
Um, so, before you is the approval of the DESI three hundred thousand dollar earmark fund grant. Um, you've approved a piece of it before, you approved the literacy curriculum.
Yeah.
Um, so we've come up with the remainder of those funds, so we're actually to approve the DESI grant funds as presented. Um, it will be a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars going towards those Chromebooks that we talked about earlier. The literacy program, um, which you've already approved, will be a total of a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars out of these funds. And then we have walkie-talkies listed for ten thousand dollars, but I'm actually gonna change that. We can't pay for the walkie-talkies out of this fund because we bought the walkie-talkies before the fund was approved, and you're not allowed to do that. Um, but, um, we discovered last week during the, um, electrical outlet outage in some of our schools, that our phone systems went down, and after a period of an hour and a half, the walkie-talkies died because the repeater battery only lasted an hour and a half. So I have Paul looking at, um, systems to keep the phones, at least the office phones, up and running during electrical outages. We think it's gonna be about five thousand dollars a school, so this will get us at least two schools done now, and then we'll come back with you with funding for the other schools, once we know exactly what the cost is gonna be and how this works.
And I'll just follow up on that piece, I, I met with the chief on Friday, we had a great meeting on a variety of topics. Uh, and this was just one debrief that his concern was that there was no way to get out of the building with a telephone call to the police station, the fire station, et cetera, so, uh, certainly support it from a safety standpoint, absolutely.
So we're looking at like UPSs for the, uh, for those, uh, devices and things like that, and the things that support it, I'm assuming?
Yeah, yep.
Is everybody comfortable with the earmark funds as presented?
Well, so it's, it's not, it's not presented, right, because the walkie-talkies are.
We gotta adjust the.
Well, yes, amended, um, as amended to not include the walkie-talkies and to possibly include.
So are, are you gonna come back with more descriptive things, or should we leave it, I mean, is it, are, are UP, are there, are, so what he's looking at for that is UPS devices for powering those during outages, or?
If you approve this funding, we will go ahead and make the purchase and install, um, the devices in two schools. We will come up with a plan for the remainder three schools and come back to you with a plan for the funding for those.
Right, so let's do that so they can move forward with the, the other plans with regard to the literacy curriculum. Who's got a motion?
Well, the literacy recr- the literacy.
It's already done, we've already approved that.
We already did that part, so it's just the one thirty-seven and the, and the ten thousand for the, for the, uh, UPS devices.
Okay.
Just read it this?
Just to not say, not say as presented, say as amended, yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought we had to be like specific, okay. Who's got it?
Oh, I'll do it. Uh, I move to approve expending the DESE grant funds as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
All right, I think we're popping back up?
Can we do international students?
Oh, of course, sorry, Barbara, I didn't realize that, that was you, too.
And you wanna go home?
International students, please.
Just a long meeting, a little bit, an hour fifteen minutes.
Right?
You can do whatever you want up there, what's next?
So we need, um, two votes, um, one is to set the tuition rate for international students for next school year.
Okay.
And the other is to vote the maximum number of open seats. Um, so the tuition this year is thirteen thousand five hundred with an additional two thousand for students requiring ELL five oh four or IEP assistance. Uh, the recommendation is to keep that the same, uh, that's kind of based on our per pupil cost. So that's our recommendation, and then, um, Kelly, um, has recommended that we keep the seven seats we have this year as the number for next year.
We, we've been able to fill those seats?
Uh, we've been able to fill the seats, they're having, they're struggling to find host families, which is why we don't want to increase it.
Okay.
It, it's not our seats, it's.
It's right, someplace for them to stay while they're here. Who's got the motion?
We're doing it separately?
Yeah.
Uh, move to approve the FY twenty-one international student tuition rate of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars with an additional two thousand dollars for students requiring ELL five oh four or IEP assistance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, excellent, and the next motion?
Then, uh, move to open a maximum of seven seats for foreign exchange student enrollment for the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thanks, Barbara.
So.
All right.
Where are we?
Back up to students, superintendent's draft goals, please.
Where do we wanna be?
We're gonna go back up to the top.
For the love of God. Okay, so, ha- as you have in front of you, um, these are truly draft goals. Uh, I would ask that, um, as you review them, it's really a combination of, of, you know, collaboration with, with Paul and with Jen Cutler, if you notice, and things do tie directly back into the blueprint, um, in terms of our improvement priority areas. And the evaluation, the instructional leadership evaluation, we met as a leadership team to discuss how we can revamp our, the process within the, the, the contract that's been signed. Uh, so the first goal, you'll notice, is that, that we're making a, a, a more concerted effort and commitment to getting into classrooms, and, you know, having more evaluations, uh, for, for our staff. Not the minimum that states in the contract, but putting a lot more effort into, um, to the observations.
Is the contract written as a minimum of?
It is, actually, yeah, so, so we've, we had good dialogue and, you know, Mike and the test of that, and, and I think part of it is it's pushing our administrators to get in more, and I think in having conversation with the AEA, uh, for those at home, it's our Ashland Educators Association, they absolutely are appreciative of the fact that, okay, you're getting in more, uh, giving feedback, especially for those, um, non-veteran teachers, so. But again, it's all, it's all in collaboration with our administrative team. You know, the second goal deals with, um, the workshop model that you approved last time, making sure we get the professional development started, purchasing the, the necessary supplies, and I was actually walking into, um, a classroom yesterday, Joey in Forrest's room, and she's sitting in the dark with this music going on, and, and she's pecking away at her computer, I said, what's going on? I'm starting to build my library, you know, which was awesome, she was, they're really excited about the new workshop model, and, and, uh, she's like, I've got an inventory of everything, and then I can figure out what we can buy, and, so, it's really kind of neat, uh, in, in speaking to the staff. They're really excited, um, for, for this, um, new system to come in.
Great news.
As you can see, you know, the SEL frameworks and implementing professional development, and we've already done some of this. Uh, if you didn't get an opportunity, which I don't think any one of you did, uh, but, um, Paul and Jen, uh, did a SEL um, Zoom session, and they'll be doing more, um.
November sixth.
November sixth, uh, we had a, yeah, we're on the Cape.
It's still gonna be, we, we may not be live on the camera, but Jen's gonna host it on the sixth.
Okay. That's the Wednesday, is that the Wednesday night?
It's the Wednesday night.
That's dinner night for us.
Yeah.
Um, so, you're out.
Senator Bill.
Yeah, so, um, so it's really actually, you know, I, I participated in, there were a, a couple of our teaching ESPs actually participated in it. It was actually kind of neat, and other people from other districts, so we invite others in. Um, and, and they do a nice job with it. And again, the, the SEL framework with the community engagement, reaching out, making sure that our families are connected. Jen has done a really nice job, uh, in many ways, but if you go on to the website, and the SEL website that she's created, there's one specific link for families, uh, and, and ways to speak with your, uh, children, uh, terminology. It's really neat, and then she's got another one that's directly related for educators, uh, in our teaching staff. Um, and, you know, Mr. Chair and I were having a conversation earlier about, um, the role itself. And when I talk to people about what we're doing, um, around the state, they're pretty impressed that we actually have this role, uh, created. And it's still morphing, right, you know, Jen would tell you, tell you all the time, and Paul, I don't know, are we doing the right thing? We don't know, you know, we're sort of building this as we go. Uh, what we do know is that you're really good at what you do, and, you know, however you try to implement it, it's gonna be really done in a positive way, so. Uh, so what I would ask is, these are truly draft, um, if you want to provide me feedback over the next, um, five or six days, and then, um, I can formalize this in a document for the next meeting. Uh, I know we have the Mendez, but it'll be too, we're actually have to, there's a, an approval for a field trip, an international field trip, I know that's coming up. Then we have the Mendez conversation, and then I would just add this, so I can have the goals formalized.
Can I, um, Madam Chair, just, I, there was, I did have a conversation with Jen this afternoon, it was one of the things that. Can I, um, Madam Chair, just, I, there was, I did have a conversation with Jim this afternoon, it was one of the things that struck me as not being among these goals, but I thought might be worthy of, of adding. Um, I'm curious whether the rest of the committee agrees, was something related to general communication, and that was something we spent a lot of time talking about during the summer retreat. Jim's already taken a number of steps to improve and streamline communication, and so that's the thing that caused us to talk this afternoon, was when I saw, um, all the language in here about communication around SEL, which I fully support. But it also struck me that, you know, given that we're trying to make an effort to improve communication as a district, um, including a goal related to that more broadly, made sense. I thought it was, A, a way to further communicate that to the community, um, I certainly know, like, all these things, he's gonna do it, whether we put a goal on the piece of paper or not. Um, but it seemed like it was a significant enough thing that we're pressing upon and pushing for as a committee, that having a goal related to it made sense to me. So, that was, so I guess I'll share with others and see whether people think it's worth, you know, um, adding that. I think we're also mindful generally, we try not to over goal, Jim, but should we, well, you usually over goal yourself, and then we agree.
We shouldn't over goal the over goer.
Over goer, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that I'll, I'll add to that, I guess, I, I mean, we've already, we've recognized it formally on Jim's evaluations year after year, that, that communication is, is a strength of yours, right? You've, I think he's earned exemplary probably in that area just about every time, but at the same time recognizing that we're, there are people that we're not reaching. So for me, the only way it's really meaningful is if we have action steps that are different than what we've done in the past, because I think he's already, you know, a great communicator, he's shown that, he's doing what he can do in lots of different ways. And if we're looking for more, I think we need to formulate some more clarity around some of the steps that can be taken to, to reach either.
Yeah, I mean, I think to that point, um, what I thought about was, we've talked about the multiple emails that go out, building principals go out, there's a lot of cotton pasting in that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Jim's tried already this year to try to streamline that with the superintendent's thing.
The newsletters often.
Yeah, which is, I think, great improvement.
Right.
Um, but I'd love to see, you know, that sort of carried out district wide.
Like district communication, kind of managing, managing the communication that everybody else is responsible for.
In the same conversation in the summer, we were talking about the website too, right?
Our district website, yeah, so just, just so I understand what aspect of communication we're talking about and what we're gonna focus on, so as long as that's clear.
That's what I was gonna say, is, you know, what Mark said is, it, it would be his goal to, uh, you know, affect change more district wide in, in how we as a whole communicate, you know, setting expectations. So there is some, while still having the freedom of the administrators to communicate in their own way, have it be, what, strike that balance where it's communicated in a consistent way, with a consistent level of communication, and, and, and setting those expectations might be where that goal should be. It, it isn't necessarily his communication, but, you know, putting in something where we're being more consistent across the district with communication.
I mean, I think it really comes down to the survey we did, and implementing the changes that we, that we all recognized were necessary.
Yeah.
You know, I think, so we could probably go back to that and come up with some bullet points, or I'm sure Mr. Adams could do that.
No, we have, and we've, and I'll be blunt, we've actually had these conversations, and you may not have noticed the changes.
I see some people laughing.
You may not have, you may not have noticed some of the changes that have occurred, um, which, I don't know if it means it's ineffective or not, but, um, each building, uh, I don't know if you noticed, when the, uh, newsletters are going out.
Friday.
Every Friday, every building on Fridays, there's consistency across that, the flyer.
I miss my Sunday one.
Uh, right, well.
Me too.
Michael?
Me too.
Doctor, Doctor Kyra was the only one, Mrs. Williams, Mrs. Williams, please.
We can't get any squirts coming through, right, on Friday?
I just, I always envisioned Mike like sitting there watching football, enjoying his family and typing up his newsletter.
He did it on Friday, you know? Um, but, but that was, that was a point. That was a point though that came up in the survey, was they wanted consisten- consistency when they went out, so we shared that, so, so that was something we adjusted.
Right.
The flyers, um, the, uh, so when I do mine now, I send all the flyers, uh, in my attachment.
Right, you've made, started to, to make some changes already.
And then, you know, the connect ed calls, um, they're only used for emergency purposes.
It's a great goal, you can do less of them.
Right, right, so, so there are pieces that, again, I didn't put it in a goal, because there are pieces that I took away from the survey, that said, from a communication standpoint, we need to do X, Y, and Z.
Yeah.
Anyway, so.
Okay.
And I actually, I had a question for the committee as well, um, based on a conversation, a question I had for Jim, about what the goals mean and what we want them to mean. And, and the context in which it came up is, um, I asked him before he, he shared the draft with us, um, are there any building project related goals? Um, and, you know, so that spawned a conversation between us about understanding what, as a committee, we believe his goals should be. He's going to be spending a fair amount of time on this, that's an understatement.
Right.
And so, should his goals reflect, if you're gonna be spending a, a, a good portion of your time on a topic, should a, a, a goal reflect that? Or is it, no, we're, we're, we expect you to do that, uh, we know it's gonna be X amount of your time, and we really just want these about changes or, or, or other things. And so, I, but, I, I, I wanted to pose that to the group, because, um, you know, you can have goals be, be doing both those things, right? We, if we believe goals should also be, uh, an expression of where he's spending his time, he will be spending, and he has been spending quite a bit of time on, on that, and we might wanna do that. But on the other hand, we're gonna be doing that regardless of whether it's a goal, and we're gonna be spending a lot of time on it, so in that, in that sense, it's a waste. But if we're also not then gonna lump more goals on, and the goals would look small if that's not in there, so, I don't know where the, where the committee's gonna land on that, but, um, but that's a conversation that Jim and I had the other day before we summed it up.
My immediate reaction to it, Paul, is that it feels like, I'm not sure how to define that goal, I mean, it's, it, it obviously is a, a project and a process that involves a lot of people, right? I mean, it really is a townwide project, you're chairing it, uh, Yawanda's vice chair, got multiple administrators in, and I think if we were to think about what Jim's role would be, and then other than having his fingers through all of it, really. I'm not sure how I'd define that, I don't know how I'd define if we're sort of at the end of the year looking at whether it's been successful, I'm not sure how I'd define that either. Um, you know, I'd love to say, here's a four-year goal, have it fixed, you know, that would be the goal, but it's not all on him, right, it's on the whole community to be successful with that. I'm not sure how, how I would, I'm trying to parse out and define.
Well, and, 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 and what, and, and I'm looking for what we think the goal, and then we can ask him, he can, if he, if we say yes, we wanna, we, what would a goal, if we said yes, what would a goal look like? We can ask him to, to try to, to try to figure it out.
So I could, I could read one for you.
Sure.
That relates specifically to what Mr. Kendall's saying. Um, and this is not mine, uh, this is actually from, uh, Westwood, the superintendent of Westwood, Emily Parks. Continued to collaborate with municipal officials and engage residents to ensure appropriate educational facilities for the future, and her key actions were complete the deliverables for the MSBA project, uh, and the feasibility study. Worked with school committee to articulate and implement a community visioning process, which is what we're actually doing, for the elementary building project, which serves the basis for the educational plan. Worked with consultants to complete security audit, identify priority action steps, benchmarks, completion of the deliverables, identification, you know, we've already got the OPM, but that, that's sort of how she, um, in Westwood, they tried to, to create a goal for her, as it relates specifically to the MSBA project, so.
And I think in part, it's more about, um, it, it's a reflection of how you're spending your time, and if we were to make that a goal, which you could say that about any of these things that are goals, they're all things that are parts of the job. And the idea with the goal is you're suppo- there's supposed to be a reach in there, right, there's supposed to be something that we're trying to improve and, and better, it's not just the kinda, the day to day is, is, is what's expected, and the goals are supposed to be something that we're trying to move from here to there. But, um, it's, for me, it's more about what does all that time you're spending on the building project mean for what we're expecting from you in these other areas? Like, is it reasonable to expect major movement and all these things, when this is such a, a, a huge commitment of, of time? I mean, and, and for you as well, and anybody else involved. So for me, it's more about that, I don't think there's, we're gonna write it all down, and at the end of the day, he's gonna say, I did it, I did it, I did it, and we're gonna say, you know, proficient, or whatever. Um, but it's more about us, it's a value, um, statement, the, the goals, right? And it's more about us saying, these are your priorities for the year, so.
So what, what does that mean to you in terms of whether we have a goal related to the MSBA process?
Well, I think, given what he's presented already, like, if he presented eight goals, you know, then I would say, either put that on there and get rid of some of those, or, you know, given what he's presented, I think it's, it's reasonable to, to put it on there if you want, just to reflect how he's spending his time. But I don't know that it's gonna change anything he's doing in regards to the project, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and, and, and it definitely, and I'm not a proponent of or, or not doing it, I, I just asked the question, and, and it's really about.
Yeah, no, I think it's a valid question, it's a value judgment about how he's spending his time this year, and I think, I think we do need to acknowledge as a committee how, um, time consuming it really is. I mean, there's, uh, you know, the every Tuesday night thing, and, and, and you as well, Paul, and, and.
Well, if you put it as a goal, then it kinda documents it, so.
Right, I mean, it gives him a chance to be recognized for what he's doing, but it also is, gives us, you know, it's an opportunity for us to look at the whole thing as a big picture, and saying, are these expectations reasonable, given what's going on here?
And I, and I would say, uh, a reason for putting it on there would be, should this impact other goals? It's on there, and not like, oh, by the way, yeah, we wrote all these other things down, but this other thing that we didn't write down impacted them?
Right.
Uh, again, I don't know that that's a reason just to do it, but, um, but again, that, that, that's the conversation we had, and, and I'm fine either way, and it, you're like you said, it's not gonna impact the project unless we formulate a goal that stipulates some impact on the project. Which I foresee us doing, uh, so it's not gonna impact what he does, but if it is, if it is a, is a value statement and a capturing of his time, then, then I would.
I think it's important as a reflection of, of something really major that's happening right now.
Right.
Agreed.
But I also think, to me, to that end, that's also evidence that I can provide, uh, as part of the, the standards as well, right?
Right.
And, and to say, here's how I spent my time with this project, uh, here's the evidence of it, it doesn't have to relate to the goal, cause there are other pieces to the evaluation structure that's not just the goals, right? It's, it's the indicators as well.
So you, you've got a few days to think about it after our conversation.
Yeah.
I mean, from, from your point of view.
If we gave you the choice, would, would you have it as a goal?
No.
Cause he didn't, but it also gives you a chance though to be credited for the time that you're spending on that project.
So, so, right, so there's going to be one individual on this board who can speak to that on a, you know, consistent basis. I mean, my goal might wanna read, you know, that Mr. Kendall, Kendall and I can still communicate after, we're done with this.
I'm surprised.
No, no. We, we have similar personalities, so it's sort of, you know, we, there, there is not a day that does not go by where there's not a phone call between us, with, with regard to this.
Today, when I text you, I was surprised how far back I needed to scroll.
Right, exactly.
And it's time to color coordinate their shirts.
Oh, yeah.
Not quite, but, you know.
Yeah, but the cross cross thing.
It's getting closer.
It is, you know.
Um, I mean, it's just, I guess, listening to the, the conversation, the things it strikes me as, sort of, action steps really is, are the, the roles that you have uniquely to lead us through certain aspects of the process. One being part of what we started the dialogue on tonight, in terms of educational process, um, and then the other, I think, is just communicating, cause I really do think you probably are the, the sort of leader of the communication around this project and getting things out, which you're doing, you know? Those are the private two things that I think most directly tie to you more than anybody else as a part of this process, at least for the year that we're in right now.
So I think, the, so if I can sort of formulate a goal with regard to communication, and then embed within that, uh, action items or benchmarks that relate specifically to the building project, then we sort of have, you know, captured both, right?
I, I can go anyway.
Well, I think that's gonna be the majority, for, at least for this coming year, where you're gonna be putting most of your effort, your communication with, with the, with the board that you're on, your communication with the community about it, your communication back to us about what's happening, um, you know what I mean? We're, we're not gonna, by the end of this year, we're not gonna have an actual building, so it is mostly communication that you're doing right, right now, so that makes sense to me. Yeah, I know, there's, yeah.
But by the time we, we, we approve this, yes, but right now he's spending a good deal of time with, uh, with Mr. Kyra, uh, on, uh, an educational plan, some of that stuff.
And that's one of me, that's one of Mike's goals, right? So.
Right.
So we give it to him, and he gives it to you.
Well.
But it is, it is a huge.
She made a comment the other day, I, I need to know which one's going downhill. So no one committed to anything, did they, Mrs. Bennett?
I like the idea of embedding, embedding, embedding it into, you know, some of the other stuff here, if, if possible, I think it should be recognized, because that is in fact, an important part of what you're spending your time on.
Uh, yeah, I'm not, again, I am not married to it, and I'm not concerned that, about the, the project itself being recognized, that we're, I'm dedicating time to it, I think that will come out anyway.
Anyone with their eyes open will know that.
Right, yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not.
And we'll all know if you don't.
Correct, that's right, you would.
Then we won't be communicating.
Then we will, right. I was just giving you an example of what Westwood did do, because I, I know Emily did it, so, but I'm not, I don't need it. I'm happy with where we are in adding the communication piece.
Well, yeah, think about that and provide feedback over the next few days.
Please.
And, you know, I guess we'll, we'll know by his next draft whether people wanted it on there.
Yeah, and I would ask that, please send me information that, if there's something that you feel cri- you know, critically important that I add to these, and or something you're like, hey Jim, I'd really like you to focus on something like this. So I, then I can put it in, and then we can discuss it, then I can communicate. That's why, you know, your input's valued.
All right, we can move to the blueprint, which has already been discussed fully, so we're just voting now.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, again, it's just the actual formal vote to accept the vision, the mission, and the four priority areas.
Right.
So then I can get it officially to, um, each school, so they can finalize their improvement plans, they have started up with their new site councils, and we just wanna be able to have that finalized.
Yep. See the A's backwards, the clock, like what's going on?
The clock is going the wrong way, isn't it?
Yes.
Couple times.
Huh. Cantor Sante.
The only thing I, I saw.
I never noticed it, I like the clock on the other one, well, our clocks don't work.
It just happens, it must be wrong.
I mean, let's be clear.
It wasn't that way before.
We're a clock town.
But somewhere else in here.
Aaron's clock works now, so we have one in the district.
No, no, no.
Isn't it, is it the first time?
Until we lost power, yesterday, it, we just sat there and watched it in the afternoon, it was cycling to finally get to the actual time.
That's emblematic, I'd say.
So, the only other thing I noticed, and this is really tiki tack, but the underlining on like some of these things is a little inconsistent, so before you do the final print, if you look at the word mission, and then down to champion educator excellence, the underlying.
A little too far for you?
Yeah, formatting.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think it's relevant to our footprint.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's fine, it's not relevant, yeah.
Everybody's still happy with the content, and we're ready to start using our vision and getting, uh, the site councils working.
Yeah, it's just. Yeah.
Yeah.
Please.
All right, who's got the motion?
I will, move to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty blueprint for continuous student improvement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kendall? Mrs. Williams, are you guys in favor of the blueprint?
Oh, yes, we are.
Okay, I just wanted to show.
That's all right, I didn't hear it right, eh?
Or else, you said the cool, you can.
Yeah.
No, when you go to the Ashland webpage, sometimes there's this like false landing page, and you have to click again.
Yeah, I never know what that's all about.
Yeah, I've, I've noticed that too.
I was just asking Paul if he had ever asked Mr. Carpenter about it, but.
No, it, it, they should have a wild card, um, but they don't, uh, so if you don't type W W, it, uh, it goes, it does that, and then it ships over, but.
It goes there.
It's free.
Okay, we're at the travel request.
All right.
Travel. Who's got that?
Doctor Kyra.
Oh. You only waited two hours for that.
The locals get to stay, the out of towners get to go.
Right, that's what you get for moving out.
He's gonna move back to Clinton in a minute.
Not a chance. Uh, thanks so much for, for letting us come in tonight and chat about this, um, request. In two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, a parent, um, an actual teacher and district lead trip came to me, um, with the idea of, uh, putting together a trip to allow our fifth grade students to have an outdoor educational experience. And she did a lot of research, she worked with me for that year, and ultimately, it's something that we would like to put in place for this coming school year, this, this current school year. Um, so we have spoken with, uh, folks at Camp Bourndale, we've worked with the folks at Camp Bourndale in Plymouth, uh, regarding a one night. uh, regarding a one night overnight trip, uh, for our fifth grade students, and this would be all fifth grade students, including single grade and multi-grade students who would go simultaneously. So it would also be another opportunity to get our entire fifth grade community together, uh, which is typically something that we have un- been unable to do. So it's, uh, again, another, uh, really exciting opportunity for our kids to collaborate, uh, during one, during one, uh, opportunity. So we're hoping that you, you folks have had the opportunity to take a look at the, at the, um, plans. Um, Bourndale has a fantastic, uh, science curriculum. Um, there's just, uh, some examples of some, some courses and descriptions of courses that they could provide. We have obviously not finalized the exact course descriptions, those are things that we would wanna make sure we were talking about. But I provided some examples within the packet for you to take a look at, um, in hope that we'd be able to offer this opportunity to our kids. Uh, just as a, another aside, we did, um, write a grant for this, um, and, uh, it was, it was funded graciously by the AFI. They presented us with a, uh, over.
Oh, wow, that was my next question.
Over twenty-four thousand dollars, I believe. And, uh, we also did a, uh, whole school fundraiser last year, uh, in which a portion of that money, uh, that was raised directly by this particular fifth grade class would be moved towards this field trip as well to help alleviate the cost. Uh, we believe that we are keeping this trip very affordable for parents, considering the fact that it would be a one night overnight trip. Uh, one of the largest expenses would be the fact that we have to take a bus, you know, a long bus ride. Um, but keeping this trip under a hundred dollars for every student, I think, is, is really, uh, affordable and that would not have been made possible if it were not for, uh, the grant monies and the fundraising that had been done.
Is, is there a way to make it possible for the kids who can't even afford the ninety dollars?
We will make that possible, yes.
Okay.
Yes, we will absolutely make that possible, as we believe that every child deserves this opportunity.
Yeah. Okay.
So, yes, there, there will be a mechanism for that to happen.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's my first thought too.
So all the classes that are listed, so you just said that's kind of a sample of probabilities?
Yeah, I wanted to provide you sort of an overview of all of the different op- classes that could be provided during the time. We have not finalized exactly which ones our students would participate in, but I wanted to show you some of the different.
Well, that's a, so will they, everybody get the chance to do all the classes that are, or is it gonna be like they're gonna pick?
No, so what we would do is we would cycle them into, into different groups and they would all have the opportunities to experience the same, the same things, but maybe not necessarily at the same time.
Right, but each one they would cycle, okay.
Right.
It sounds awesome.
Yeah, it's, it's very, it's really exciting and, and I know, I, I believe that a trip like this had happened years ago, maybe way back, uh, but this is something that I, you know, just a tremendous opportunity for our kids. I, I participated in one as a teacher a long, long time ago with kids and, um, they just, they were fantastic. And I know many people have talked, Dr. Viera told me that his wife actually has participated in this trip. And, and we hope to eventually be able to grow the trip where it's more than one night, but I think for this first year, good opportunity to go and test it out, see how we do.
Yeah.
Uh, and, um, that was also something the teachers had requested, that we just keep it to one night for this initial one.
Yeah, excellent, it sounds fantastic.
So you'll have all fifth grade teachers and then a smattering of neighborhood teachers also go on the overnight, like, what's your chaperone?
So I'm not sure exactly who will chaperone overnight, um, we're gonna have to ask some, for some parents to chaperone overnight. We're gonna have to probably ask for some teachers to volunteer to go overnight, those are things that we'll, we'll talk to, to folks about. Uh, we will need some parent volunteers for overnight, um, but the teachers, the expectation of the teaching staff is that they would be there with us during the day, uh, definitely, and I'm sure, I've spoken to many of them, they, they have said that they would be happy to stay overnight.
And we need to travel with an Ashland-based nurse.
Um, I think these are things that we can discuss with the nursing staff, um, I do not know if they have a nurse on staff, but I can certainly find that out.
Yeah, and, and so I, I was gonna, I, I think it sounds great, and will you be coming back to us when you have more of the logistical details of? Cause I was gonna ask a similar question, like, okay, you're taking the entire class, then, you know, what does that mean from the, because nurses typically sign off on, hey, these ten kids are going, this one has this, and so it's obviously a much more complex when you're saying, you know, entire class, so.
Well, they do it for DC.
I mean, that really is administrative stuff for, for like the.
But I think usually when we've seen these forms.
Well, the form normally is more complete when it, when it, when it comes to us for approval on that stuff.
And they say, like, how many nurses are traveling, like, when they, like the Montreal trip or the Quebec City trip, like, they took a nurse with them, right? And DC obviously has that, so just wanna.
Okay.
Just as a kid that needs the nurse.
But they need to set.
But can we approve it?
Yeah, no, no, yeah, I, I think.
Yeah, approve either way, but.
Just, you know, as it comes.
We trust that you're gonna.
Cause we're gonna get it to get it. Yeah, I'll absolutely, I'll, I'll bring that back to you, I mean, I, I imagine, well, I know that the next week's meeting is not, um, dedicated to anything else, but I will make sure I have that provided to you in terms of the nursing staff. Um, the only reason I don't have the exact number of chaperones right now is because, uh, they, they said that you need to sort of demonstrate how many chaperones based on the exact kids that are going on the trip, so.
Is there, is there a requirement by the facility, or is there a state requirement when we're?
No, there's, there's just a recommendation by the facility, um, that they would have, uh, a chaperone for overnight in each of the bunks where children are staying. Um, so they, they said, and it could range anywhere from ten to forty, so we sort of have to, you know, make that, make that, um, determination as we get closer.
But I'll just add my, I was looking at this, all this material today before, and I'm just really pleased to come across this. I mean, I think it's, uh, the fact it ties into the academic curriculum in a different way, an experiential way. I think if this thing goes well, I think you may be creating the fifth grade version of the DC trip, you know, for the eighth graders.
Like, this is, this is like your, your big celebration, I mean, I know they have the banquet too, but like, this is like, sort of like a big step.
Yeah, and you think this is a tremendous opportunity for our kids, and I also think there's a major, uh, which might not necessarily be in this, uh, packet, but there's a major SEL component to this too.
For sure.
Talking about students who have the opportunity to, to use teamwork, to collaborate throughout the time, and just a, a really different learning experience.
And, and I like that it's everyone.
Everyone.
Yes.
All together.
You know, I, I know that's a big deal for you as well, so.
Thank you, and then it was well planned and put together, it sounds amazing.
And it's also, it's, it's like when you do like Sturbridge Village or Plymouth Plantation, like, it's so Massachusetts-centric and like you're teaching your kids, like, and this is just at a deeper level of what to be proud of, of your state and your area.
Oh, absolutely.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
You got the motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
All right, move to approve the student travel request from Mindus School, grade five, outdoor education field trip to travel to Camp Bourndale in Plymouth, Mass, June first to June second, twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
And make sure you keep track of, uh, the outdoor educational settings that worked really well, so it can influence uh, some, some kind of project that's coming down the pipe.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, have a good night, thanks.
Thanks. We're back to our home. Yeah, sure.
Okay, where are we?
Uh, we're on ten.
Yeah.
Where have we?
Director of Finance and Operations job.
We're almost done. We are almost done, so.
Almost done with what?
With the meeting.
No, we're not.
Well, that, cause, yeah, cause, cause Mr. Kendall hasn't spoken yet.
Will you, Kendall still has to talk?
Will you tell me when it's safe to?
Well, you keep talking too long, which is.
We're, we're not really gonna get to the MASC.
We have a two-minute time.
So, so I have two things, one before you is, um, the Director of Finance and Operations, as you know, Ms. Durin is retiring in October of two thousand and twenty, and it's time that, um, we look, uh, to get the process started, uh, for replacement, um, for the position. Uh, that being said, I, I went back through and looked at the job descriptions of, there were two, right? An Assistant Superintendent of Finance and then a Director of Finance position. And then I, I did a little outreach, uh, to other districts who have currently, um, been in the process of hiring, um, Finance Directors of Oper- and Operations, uh, in the past year, uh, to see if there was anything that we were missing in our two other, uh, job descriptions that are in our, um, uh, packets. And why, what I failed to get, have Karen give you were, were our, um, our job descriptions that we currently have, um, and I apologize for that. But what I would say is, all I did was clean up the, um, the way it looks, but the performance responsibilities. Uh, again, it was about language change and changing, um, from an Assistant Superintendent model to the, back to the Director model, uh, which is important, um, and adding in some of the new language with regard to physical working conditions and, um, you know, qualification skill sets. So what I'm asking, if, if you don't feel comfortable approving the job description as is and you'd prefer to get a copy of the other, um, to compare, I certainly can do that for you, but what I would tell you is it's, it's not exclusive of anything that we already had. And the only thing that really changes is the formatting of, of, of this description. And twenty-one catches everything, uh, just so you know, uh, roll, roll twenty-one captures everything, just so you know. Other duties, it's the other duties.
Whatever Jim says.
Right.
It's the other duties.
Just, just so you know, that never went out electronically.
Just, you never got this?
Nope, I was just looking.
I didn't think I saw it.
Really?
No, never went out. The policy went out and the timeline went out, but the.
The policy. Yep.
You, so you don't have it in your packet?
The additional backup that went out yesterday, it wasn't in there.
How did you get it?
It's in the, it was in the, it was in the printed packet, but it was not, it was not in the elec- not, it's not electronic.
Oh.
Oh, that must be it, yeah, cause I have it, right?
Cause yours is printed, okay, our, we have ours.
And you don't either, okay.
Can we, to maybe potentially address, cause this happened, like, just a few times, it's not like a problem, like, can we just make a Google Drive location of all the stuff that we're gonna go over and then we?
I, I tend to have a really hard time operating Google Drive with my network at work in terms of like being able to get into things.
Oh.
I don't know why, but it's, um, I mean, you guys want, I'm just trying to figure it out, but.
Like, I'll take care of it.
All right, Eric, is anyone comfortable voting on this? I mean, it's, it sounds like it's just a formatting thing and not a content thing.
Doesn't feel like we really even need, well, I guess it's the director thing.
Well, you, right.
We hire the position.
This is a position you will actually have to hire for.
Yeah.
So we still hire the director, I thought it was only because it was super.
Correct, nope, it's the director. It, it, as if, like, so Director of Student Services is also, it's an appointed position by the school committee.
Right.
Yeah.
Who's got the motion?
Yeah.
Sure, do we all feel comfortable?
Okay, move to accept the revised job description for the position of Director of Finance and Operations as presented.
To move. All in favor?
And again, I did actually have it vetted as well, uh, through our attorney, just so you know, in terms of some of the language, I wanted to be clear there too.
Oh, good, yeah, okay. The timeline?
So, so, so then it moves on to, um, I, I have a draft timeline for the process for you and that you didn't get either.
No, we got the timeline.
You got the timeline, just not the job description, okay. So the timeline, um, is as follows, really starting, um, by December sixth, starting, getting the search team together, uh, based on your school committee policy, which is, uh, C, CBB, not CBBS, but CBB.
CBB.
Um, just trying to make sure we get it all squared away. Um, getting, getting to the night here, um, a school committee member, two building administrators appointed by the superintendent, parent from Ashback, parent at large, two central office administrators selected by the superintendent. And, and I added, um, in addition to, uh, cause the policy actually states I can add individuals in that I feel are necessary, an employee from the business office as well. With the, with the process being using Masbo website as well as the School Spring website, which we use, uh, for our job postings, um, MASC and MAS, Superintendent Association and School Committee Association, where they post jobs as well. Um, so getting applications out, uh, and back into, um, the district by the third of January, um, which is why I need this approved, cause this is what we post, is the job description. Um, and so I can get that done as soon as possible, uh, gives us a couple of months to actually start collecting information. There are current Business and Finance Director jobs open now with, uh, districts actively seeking this, this role, just so we're aware, uh, you're aware. Um, so the sooner we get on it, doesn't mean the person's starting, it's just we had then, hopefully by March, uh, which is the end date here, the sixth, uh, tentatively around there, we have someone in place for July one, right? Um, and I've worked out with Barbara a number of special projects that we would like, I would like her to perform while she's in that July to October timeframe, um, you know, so.
So we are, our intent is to, to budget and carry for two people from July to October.
Cause she's not retiring until, correct. Uh, I think it's critically important that the new person get aboard, uh, onboard them as soon as possible in July, uh, therefore, working within the current budget structure and, um, having that, uh, transition with Barbara present. I've had conversations with Barbara about, does she wanna be local, meaning in the same, she said, I don't want, I had that happen to me, that's what she's saying, with Mary Lou Hunt, who was fantastic, she said, it was really awkward for those two months, um, that we were both together. Like, do I take control of this or do I not?
Right, who's in charge kinda, right.
Right, and, and we want, I want that clear line to be created, that whomever we hire is in that role. Barbara's here as a, you know, a resource for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, but, yeah, so we are gonna have, that's part of the budget process, yes, we'll be carrying until October.
But you've got, it sounds like you have a good plan with Barbara, how you want that to work.
Correct, yeah.
So, question as it relates to the search team.
Yeah.
Uh, especially given the, the great collaboration that's occurred the last two years.
Yep.
Would it make sense to have a municipal, someone like, like Jen or someone, uh?
It's a great point and I'm absolutely can add them to the list, yeah.
So, so, I mean, I, that, cause what I would hate to see happen is we hire someone, we think it's gonna be awesome and then
They can't.
That, that, that working relationship is gonna be very important, so.
Yep, perfect.
So the only, that's, I think, Paul's making a great point there, um, what they, I would just say in terms of having an employee from the business office, I, I've certainly seen a few places where people try to have someone from the office who will be reporting to that person, um, involved in the process. It can work fine, but it also can put a person who might not have been supportive of a particular candidate that everybody else thinks is great in a very uncomfortable scenario in the long term.
Right.
Um, so, you know, it's like, like, this is your committee, you know, this is really your, your committee of people, advisory committee to you. So however you want it defined, you know, I'm fine with, um, but just, if you haven't, if you haven't thought through all of.
I have and I've actually got the individual that I'm, would ask to, to be a part of it, um, because, um, I think they can actually work through all of the concerns you just mentioned.
Okay.
Uh, and would be, um, critical to have their feedback, um, for the new individual.
Okay.
No, that's.
Do we need a motion for the timeline?
No, I, I think.
Okay, all right.
I think we, we kind of, boy, we don't wanna be involved in creating a committee or, or any of that stuff.
Right, 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 right.
Well, eventually I'm gonna have to come to you and ask.
We're gonna, we're gonna hire the person, but.
Who you want to participate.
Yes.
Right.
Uh, okay.
And are you, so that's what I was already thinking about, given that I am the finance person on the board, that this is my wheelhouse, but.
I can use your credit card.
Are you fully committed to four days of interviews, two weeks in a row?
Am I committed to it? No, I'm just.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's, first interview is in the week of, second interview is in the week of. It may not be four days, it's, it's tentatively placed for, you know, what, what if we only get four candidates, right? And we just bring in four the first week, it may be two the second week.
Okay.
It might be one day of doing the four, it's just a tentative, so what happens is you need to put out there to, uh, prospective employees that here's the tentative timeframe we're looking at doing interviews, might be over a two-week period. Might be over a, you know, one-week period. I don't know what the market looks like right now, that's why I wanna get ahead of it and see, um, where we stand.
And if you get this done by March, you also have people who have employment agreements that have to give ninety days notice or something like that.
That's right, right.
You give yourself a much better chance to get somebody by July one.
Right. So, okay, well, thank you.
All right.
Great.
Do you have a superintendent's report?
I do not, but we've gotta, we don't wanna skip over Mr. Kendall.
Oh.
They do actually.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do.
Do you think I made a mistake?
No, I do not, I do not think you made a mistake.
You don't make those kind of mistakes.
No, we have no candy tonight.
Mr. Kendall.
I had, I had a bag of Sour Patch Kids in the car for you guys.
Did you? Oh, my gosh.
Okay, go on, let's move on, Mr. Kendall.
We're going along, Paul? So, I'm gonna.
Wow.
Going to the light.
You're not going through this whole thing already, Paul?
No. But, uh, but there are some.
He totally just.
He did, he did send, saying, he was just gonna talk about some of it.
Yeah, so, um.
Not that one.
No.
Yeah, some of the other.
Yeah, but didn't he say something like, you know?
Okay, so, um, so first of all, um, just wanna reiterate, uh, twenty-ninth, we, we have our, um, uh, educational vision workshop that's, uh, open to the public, we, uh, um, that is a workshop, it's gonna be broken into small groups, uh, for, uh, really the educational vision of setting the, the priorities and goals of what we think elementary education is gonna wanna be in Ashland for the future, so, um, uh, everyone's welcome, um, you know, it would be great to have students, uh, as well, anyone in the community, uh, is, it, it's gonna be, this is, this is one of the first, uh, times to really engage and, and influence the project.
Paul, do you ever say where it's gonna be?
Uh, that is, uh, the twenty-ninth, it's gonna be in the high school, uh, library, we're doing it over there because we need, uh, the space and the breakout space and, and, and those things, so.
It starts at?
Six to eight. And, uh, flyers went out, there's posters, uh, posted in each school, there's two here in the, um, in the town hall, there's one in the library and also at the community center. So, uh, that's just enough why of that. And what I, what I have here to share with you is a presentation, um, that was made to the building committee last night at our meeting. Uh, I'm not gonna go over the entirety, entire thing with you, I'm gonna focus on some of the test fits. Uh, and, uh, and so I'm just gonna breeze through some of the things of what's been going on, um, but, uh, as it relates to the test fits, I think it is valuable that, uh, you see what, uh, what was thrown out there, um, and provide any, any feedback that we can bring back to the designer, uh, as well, so. So, they, they just provided some of the workflow of what's been going on and what things are going, um, again, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on that. Uh, the next section I'm gonna kinda go through, uh, very briefly, this kinda, um, is about the, um, the educational visioning and the ed plan that the administrators are working with the subconsultant on. As I've mentioned before, uh, the ed plan and space template are what comes together to define what the project will look like, both from, uh, the building, but also, uh, and quite importantly, the, the MSBA's reimbursement. So, the space template, um, uh, and the educational programming, uh, is that conversation we have with the MSBA as to what the square footage of the building is and what square footage is to different categories, whether it be core, core academics and classrooms, whether it be, uh, English language support, special education, those different square footages. And so, I'm not gonna belabor this, but these are the, um, the different, uh, things that are coming out of, uh, the conversations they're currently having. Uh, it goes over the two enrollments of the six thirty-five, which would retain a three through five, uh, configuration, and then the eight thirty, eight forty-five, which would be a two through five. So, to read these, this is, hey, with core academic, general classroom, and a six thirty-five setting would probably be requesting from the MSBA, two more additional classrooms of nine twenty-five square foot each, over what the generic base template, space template would be. Um, and so, that's where the educational plan and the space template, we come together, have a conversation with MSBA about really what our needs are, um, and then, you know, at the end of that, they either agree or disagree or come up with, hey, you asked for, uh, N number of classrooms, we think you can get away with this many, and then the, the reimburse, reimbursable spaces is set at that.
Can you, Paul, as you're talking, can you just talk about what the, um, the reason why we're looking for two additional classrooms? Is that, that's above.
Element-based or?
So, so, so understand what, so their, their generic space template just says, you have six hundred and thirty-five students, it's this elementary thing, and here's the, here's the thing, it doesn't take into account what a district does from its own programming perspective. Um, and so, this is what is so important about that educational plan and working through that and making sure that we really, uh, document what we're doing and what our plans are for the educational programming in the building.
So, so we have, simply put, we have ten classroom teachers per grade level, right? So, if it's, you know, the two additional classrooms based on the MSBA wouldn't get us there, I mean, we need to add those classrooms, so.
Yeah, so, so, so again, it, it's, this is describing, okay, you just plug in the base numbers into their template formulas and it, and it spits out, here's your square footage in these areas, and then we go, okay, here's what we think our needs are, this is where it's deficient, um, and, you know, and then we, we go through the process and we make the request to the MSBA as part of this process to say, hey, we, we need, we think we need four more classrooms here, we think we need more special education, here's why. We need, oh, you always need to have that dialogue and justify it, um, and, and that's what, that's what these are about, and I'll get it. This is still in flux, this is part of the conversation that the administration's having with the subconsultants and, and the designers, and, uh, it is not the end product at all, uh, at this point, so that's why, one of the reasons I don't wanna belabor it, but it gives you a glimpse of the process that they're going through, uh, and now, and, and what that will look like, right? So, uh, one of the things on here, there's different categories of, 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 of things, and so the gym, gym's one of them, right? And so, there's, there's a cap at six thousand square foot for, uh, elementary, um, but there's potential, it's, it's not as clear-cut as some of the other things, but if we can really demonstrate that in the larger, uh, uh, two-through-five setting, that we do need more space, cause right now our, our gym at, uh, Mendez is eight thousand square feet, so it's two thousand square feet more than what would be allotted by the day, uh, by the, by the default. So, those are all the different things where we need to go through that process of really outlining what our programming looks like, what we want it to look like, um, and justify, uh, square footage needs for the different things, whether it be, you know, uh, SEL's a big thing for us, right? So, guidance and everything like that, those types of office spaces, that, you know, the template is a little bit slow to pick up on the, on those needs. So we need to figure out whether we can request those things, are there other ways we can manipulate and utilize space that says, okay, in these, you know, adjacencies and different things we can do to meet those needs. So, these are just slides that kinda talk about those things, and so, as you go through it, this one talks about, okay, here's the proposed, here's what that six thirty-five, that previous slide was talking about, in those areas. And this is what the MSBA net default would say, and here's the difference in the square footages that were, we would be requesting if we went forward today with whatever those, those are. And then, it goes through the same thing with the eight forty-five, um, enrollment, that's the two-through-five. So you'll see that, that'd be three additional classrooms, uh, more English language support, uh, things like that. Increasing the STEM possibly, um, and this one, we would potentially be requesting the eight thousand square feet, uh, with this type of enrollment. And, and again, we, we might even need to revisit enrollment numbers, we, we already have an agreement with certified, but, correct me if I'm wrong, we're already at six sixty-something.
Six sixty-one.
Six sixty-one in Mendez. So, with, that's with three-through-five, and so, six thirty-five is what the three-through-five enrollment certification was at. So we're, we're thirty, we're almost thirty above that, uh, right now, so.
We're already beyond that, yeah.
I do have one just general question, if it's sort of, doesn't fit into this conversation, that you can sort of let it go, but
No.
To what degree do we talk about in this building project at, at any level, what future growth is? I mean, I know they've got a number and how do, how do we know that we're building something that isn't gonna be obsolete in three years?
Well, so that, that initial conversation has already occurred, and that's what the enrollment certification was, at, at six thirty-five and eight forty-five.
But it's already low.
Well, no, well, not necessarily, it, it, you're looking at future, but you're looking at currently what we have, and then what's the backlog from K through whatever, and then anticipated in Mendez.
Right, okay.
And we always, always have to remember, this, there, there, there is a ceiling at some point, right? Uh, you know, and other districts are going through the complete opposite we are, right? Where they have space that is just sitting there. Um, and so, it's that balance, they don't wanna say, okay, you're at this trajectory and you're always gonna be at the trajectory. Well, we can't be always at that trajectory, we're gonna, we're gonna have to top out at some point, and it's finding that, and they have their ways of determining it. Obviously, we've had consultants come in and give us their projections, um, and so, it, it's possible that we need to revisit that conversation. But they also build in to the project that, hey, we need to accommodate a certain amount of growth as well. So, uh, it's, it's, it's something that we're gonna continue to look at and, you know, over the process, and, and if, if the need does arise, then, then we will do that. Hopkinton was a prime example of that, they had to go back to the MSBA and say, we need to relook at enrollment.
Right, well, that's what I was gonna say, like, they did that already once, and then now they're kind of at capacity now, right?
They're more than their best.
So, um, now, I, I think they have, I think they have things at play that we don't, and I don't think we'll, we'll be in that, so.
They'll make a C far.
Yeah, so, uh, but again, um, so, so that's what this slide is, and it goes through the same thing again with the eight forty-five and says, okay, uh, based on current conversations, um, this is what the delta would be in these areas. So, and if you're looking at, um, what the, uh, grossing factor is, that gross square footage, the X, uh, that is, uh, a, basically a ratio of, hey, listen, you have this many square footage, and we've talked about all the usable spaces, what about all the other spaces? Mechanical hallways, all the other different spaces, and that's just saying, hey, you know, for every, you know, uh, for how, however big your building is, you need this percentage of additional space for the, you know, other things. So, again, I didn't wanna spend a lot of time on that, but understanding what that is. The primary focus that we spent our time on, uh, last night, and talking about was, was site selection and, and some of the test fits. So to reiterate, uh, what we talked about previously, the MSBA is going to make us do certain things. Uh, we have to, first of all, as a baseline, the, the first thing that we have to do is the designer and the, and the subconsultants are gonna come up with a code cost. In other words, taking the si- the current building, not incorporating any growth or anything like that, and just bringing it up to code. All right, so that's one thing that they're gonna come up with a cost for. And then, you're, we have to look at an add-reno option, um, so, we have to, and, and then we have to look at new construction as well. So those are the options they make us look at. And so, we have other variables in there, uh, so we have obviously the different sites, uh, we have the different grade configurations, uh, and hopefully after our November meeting, we don't have the variable of multiple programs. So, this just kinda outlines where the sites are, um, they went through some of the, um, wetlands and all the delineations and what's buildable, what the setbacks are, uh, for those things. Uh, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on that, uh, one thing that, uh, their wetland scientists did say, um, that is likely, and they're gonna walk the site, is along what is on the right-hand side of the screen here, so on that east, uh, northern east side, uh, there might be some more wetlands over there, and so that, um.
Sorry, Paul, where are you talking about?
So this one.
There's no page numbers, but.
Yeah.
I think I'm on the right page.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so right now I'm on the one that, that talks about the site, uh, the setbacks and, and things like that, uh, at Mendez.
Yeah, repeat that though, Paul.
Which part of the map are you talking about?
So, uh, so I'm talking about.
There's a, uh, green.
Behind the left, um.
Thing right there, to point to, there's a pointer, oh, right here. Right here.
Oh, here we go.
If you wanna point to it, so you can see.
Yeah, so, right along this northeast side, uh, they expect that there's probably some, uh, currently undelineated wetlands that might be there. Um, and so, there's a hundred-foot setback on buildings for, uh, wetlands, and so that might change, uh, the, the setback there. But, uh, a- as you'll see from the, uh, from the options, that, that doesn't really, uh, modify too much. So, this outlines what the current buildable area is, um, and they, they, there, there obviously is the opportunity to go further up into the woods here and the, on the, on the north side, um, but there's plenty of buildable area without going up there. That's obviously a little bit more site work because of not only the woods, but, uh, it, it's a hill over there, and you, you obviously wanna preserve what you can of that, uh, there's the easy, obvious thing is there's big green flat spot, right, right where the buildable area is there, so that's where they concentrated their efforts. So, this is what I wanted to really, um, you know, put in front of you for your comments, is some of the, um, the test fits. And what, so I wanna be very clear what the test fits are. So what the test fits did is they went back to, uh, this, and these, all these test fits talk about the biggest scenario, cause it's always easy to, to, to shrink, right? Um, and so where they come up with their numbers, if you're gonna see roughly about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand square foot block, and that's from this proposed, uh, net square footage number, uh, from our previous space template, right? So they took that and they plopped, uh, some options in there. Now, this one's not quite as plopped, it's actually, okay, if we were gonna add square footage to the existing building, what would it look like? So this is, uh, one add-reno option, would be to create a new, um, a new two-story building, kind of, uh, right here, that stretches between the, the current auditorium and, and back over to, uh, that, that, this is where the library is, right? So, um, so, and, and you'll, you'll see, uh, it's probably hard to see on that one.
Paul, does this one sort of eliminate where the, um, the, the ramp hallway and also part of the calf?
Right, so this will be reworking all of that, uh, and in this, in this test fit, this area, which is currently the auditorium, would no longer be an auditorium. And the reason for that is, we do this, the whole building needs to be brought up to code.
Right.
Right? So, that's pretty much a gut job. And so, if we were to do that and keep this an auditorium, we're gutting the auditorium and keeping it as an auditor, there's a, there's a significant cost there, and that would not be reimbursable, uh, because auditoriums in elementary schools are not reimb- reimbursable. So, the only thing that would be reimbursable there is the stage area, uh, because the stage is, um, uh, is, is reimbursable. So in this, in this test fit, the auditorium as it currently resides would be reprogrammed. So, whether that be raise the grade up level, um, you know, partitions in and, you know, u- utilize that. I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this because it's most likely that these will probably end up not being very viable. Uh, one of the other obvious things here is displacement, right? So you're doing this, you're doing a phased construction and removing parts of the building, and obviously, you can't cohabitate, right? So, this would involve modulars or some other displacement, um, at which, that, that, that temporary, uh, housing would not be reimbursable as well.
I found it interesting too, that, that area in the blue, uh, there was actually drawings in the fifties, uh, that actually had that, um, second story in the back.
Yeah, so, and that's one of the reasons why the designer, designers chose this.
What Jim Hannah brought.
That was Jim Hannah was talking about a little bit, yeah, but.
He said he found these old.
He didn't, no, he didn't find them.
He found the.
No, he found the old architect.
Original architect, right?
Yeah, we found the.
Yeah, so, so, so this was in the original drawings, obviously, you know, structurally, you couldn't just do what they wanted to do, uh, but that's, that's one of the reasons for this test fit. So, you'll, so you'll see what was kept in the blue is what's new, um, with the reworked parking and, and play areas, uh, and this field, I think the fields kinda get jogged a little bit, but essentially remain kind of where they are.
You lose the front field though, right?
Well, yeah, but that's like.
You, you lose, you would lose the front field for the parking and, and.
So that's the question I had, is when it comes to the fields, do we get reimbursed for replacing, so, the T-ball field in this situation is gone, and we'd have to.
So I say, I say no, and here's the real answer, which is essentially no. Site costs are capped at eight percent, okay, which we will go well beyond, every project does. So, um, everything we add as far as relocating fields, essentially, no, because we've already reached the cap, there will be a small percentage of something that. There will be a small percentage of something that potentially, but again, it's, it's basically on our dime to relocate fields. So, but again, ball fields like this, that's trivial, that, that's not even a rounding error on a project like this. That is, that's grading and, and putting a backstop, that's, that's, that's.
For those, yes, but for the forested area to the left, like to the northwest of those? So we're already at a field deficit in the town for, especially for baseball and for soccer.
Are we?
Yeah, and so losing, losing the T-ball field is actually, I, I think you'd have Ashland youth baseball and softball. We, we should try to think about who our sports partners are in town as far as when we're doing the field because then if it means either they're on the hook or we're on the hook or there's community fundraising for it, but you would potentially need to add and cut down the trees and level the northwest or more like the central north.
I wouldn't get too far involved with this, this option.
Right, I, I, I.
Any, any option where we're moving fields?
Maybe so, but I'm saying I wouldn't.
No, we do have a field deficit, yeah.
Right, and I, I totally get that although as a priority item, that is.
Nope, it's, sports is absolutely.
Our, our, our partner, youth sports, you know, can't be influencing the project to the.
Unless they're willing to pay for it.
In, in my, in my, yeah, I mean, so certainly if there's buildable space and the funding comes from wherever, I think the school committee would be the ones that would say yes or no, just the same way we do with a class wall or, or whatever the case is, so. So again, this is add-reno option one, there's two in here.
Are the squiggly lines, are those like a walking path?
Yes, yes, so, 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 those are, those are walkways. So again, that's, that's a phased construction, would, would need displacement, things like that. This one is basically extending out over here to the, the east side and putting the parking over here. Again, a phased, phased approach. With this one, a bigger challenge would be, okay, we're displacing where? You're pretty limited because if you're building here and you're knocking down over here, you know, you, you, you'd have to put them over here somewhere, but now you have, so there would be challenges. The end result, if you were doing an add-reno, I, I personally would like this one a lot better, but logistically, you know, maybe it's possible, but it doesn't seem very, very easy.
Another question about any of the sites here, have they all considered leaving the grave site?
The grave site, I believe is that right there, the grave is that thing, I believe.
The answer's yes. There's conversation. We know it's there.
So, so again, the, the, these are the, these are the add-renos, not where I want to focus a lot of the time, but, you know, you know, welcome to make any comments on, on the add-renos. I, I think that there's significant challenges with those from lots of different perspectives. You know, we are certainly going to, and it's, it's tough to see, but the, the pink outline here that you see is the, is the current building footprint. It doesn't show up real well up there, shows up a little better here on the screen. So, and, and for the community, what I'm showing right now is already up on the, on the building committee's website from our meeting last night, so. All right, so there's also a couple of new construction, you know, concepts. So this would be a potential new construction, again, you see the outline of the current building and.
Look at it, two fields.
You're still down one.
No.
Well, we're still down one because you have two, we have, we have two in the back and one in the front now, so. And technically we have two in the front, they use, they use a couple of different.
Well, they use, they turn that one baseball field into, because of the size of it, it's, on a Saturday, it is four fields for a T-ball.
So, so with this one, it's, I'll, I'll deem this the easy fit, sticking the big, big block over in the flat green area.
It's very scientific of you. Big block in the green area.
And you'll see why, you'll see why, in the next slide, why, why this one is, is that. So you'll see the, you know, much improved, look at, look at all this parking for anybody who's Bennett Mendez. You know, you'll have separate drop, queuing for, for parents dropping off as well as buses.
The loop on the right is the bus loop and the.
Right, this would, this would be bus drop-off and, and parents, parents would be over here.
What was the linear foot, Paul, they said they needed based on the.
Thousand, I think it was.
Thousand linear feet.
So they, they, the traffic engineer saw what the rate of drop-off was in the morning and the estimate is about a thousand foot of queue space, which is enormous.
And that's also dependent on our fee structure.
No.
No.
You don't think so?
No.
You don't think that we would have less drop-offs with?
Nope.
If it was, it would be so marginal, I don't think it would impact that, not anything, so.
No, no, I'm just saying, there's no, no correlation.
So the good thing here is this can be totally occupied, no displacement required. Certainly you'd have logistical things you'd need to work through, but all very doable. So this wouldn't, would be occupied while, while in construction. It's still called a phased approach because you would be building, then switch occupation and demo.
During occupy, during the new build, you're losing your place structure and area.
Not necessarily. Remember, the, the, the place, place structure is right here. Right?
Okay.
Because this is the end of the building.
Right, but that's a really narrow, if you look at the property line.
Yep.
And the building.
Again, this is, and, and I want to, I want, and maybe I didn't preface this as well. This is the first spitball thrown against the wall of, hey, solicit feedback on, on these things that they did. All the details of it, they're, you know, they're confident and everybody's confident that logistically this can cohabitate and we would, we would do that. And remember, even if you said, hey, listen, you know, the place structure and stuff like, even if you made, you, you moved recess out to the front, there, there's lots of options and the details of it, even like the, the flow. And you'll see the next one, I gave them some feedback last night on the flow of the, the second option on the site where I like the option, but, you know, and I prefaced it with, I knew they just kind of threw out the lines for the traffic flow. Doesn't flow as well as this, as this one, but probably could. So, so, so again, this is just the easiest, obvious throwing the big building into that back right corner. Again, possibly impacted if the setback is adjusted here, depending on, depending on the outcome. And again, that setback for the wetlands is for the building. So if, you know, in the, in the next one, you'll see that, you know, you don't have to have that same setback for parking. But it might be influenced a little bit by that, but again, this isn't even the real shape of a building. It is the footprint of a two-story, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand square foot building.
On the, because some of them make us sort of one-story, some are two. Is there any sort of general theme or consistency out there, whether elementaries are being built as ones or twos?
So, most of them are multi-story and a lot of them are three stories. So all of these test fits are only two-story. And that's because, okay, well, you're probably going to be two-story at least, you might be three-story, but if you can test fit two-story, you can certainly work with three stories, right? So again, that's all these test fits, two-story, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand square foot blocks on, on the page, knowing that if it's six thirty-five, the footprint will shrink, but we can certainly shrink it, we can't grow it. So it's all about quasi worst-case scenario, if you will, of a, of a test fit.
Is there, is two stories just cheaper to build, is that what people are doing that? Or is it better to have a block than a ranch, I don't know.
Well, I mean, so I think a lot of it is, you know, you know what a one-story looks like. Looks like Mendez, right? You know.
More costly for sure, I mean, running pipes, running.
Well, and it's spread out, is that, is that why? And well, it's mostly, who has that much land?
I, I figured that.
Well, land's a consideration, you know, it's certainly cheaper to build up than out on any structure. You, you're talking, the, the, the square foot cost for your foundational and.
We want one really tall.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's easier to go up.
Power.
So it's, so it's striking that balance, but it's also keeping people together. The sprawl, one of, one of the things everyone here knows about Mendez, the sprawl sucks, right? You don't want this really sprawling thing that, and, and especially when you're trying to form community. You want proximity. You want also then adjacencies to the spaces, right? To better leverage a, a media room, right? You don't want it to be, you know, two hundred yards from classroom A, but five feet from classroom B. You want it, you know, fifty feet from both if you can, right? So you want that proximity, you want that adjacency. So will it be two stories, will it be three stories, will it be partially both? That's further down the line. These test fits are literally just sticking a two-story, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand square foot block on the site to see what it means, to see what the parking means for three to four hundred spots. It'll probably be at least three hundred spots that we, we would want or need. And so what that would look like to make sure that it works on a site.
Do you know how many spots we have at Mendez now, just for comparison?
What was that, Jim? It, it, it's, it's in there, it's, I think it's only like a hundred something. Or maybe it's two hundred something, I can't remember what it is.
I don't know.
Paul, the, the green dotted line that goes around the building, is that like a service delivery sort of driveway or?
This around here?
Yeah.
I think that's probably delineating the emergency access required. I don't think it would be a road, but it would be.
Technically, Mark?
I think it would be the clearance required for emergency vehicles and things like that.
I mean, that makes sense, think about it, it's just that's.
So, and, and all of them have a, obviously a better centralized entrance there, so. So this next one is a potential other option on the site. So from the designer's perspective and, you know, from, I think from the committee's perspective as well from last night, this one is a much more appealing one from just a sighting perspective. If you, regardless of the current building, if you were looking at this site and you were going to put a building on it, where would you put it? The first one was easy from a current configuration standpoint, but you wouldn't typically tuck away the building so it's not really visible from the road and say, here's parking lots to look at, right? This one's cited a little bit more in the middle. The parking is off to the side and tucked away. And so from that perspective, it kind of flows a little better. The parking is more optimally spaced from a distance to the building and those things. It also, because of that potential for the setback difference over here on the, on the northwest or northeast side here, then the, that delineation wouldn't, that wetlands delineation wouldn't impact the building at all because the, the parking lot can be within that hundred, there's a different setback for parking. But as, as I mentioned, from my perspective last night when I gave my feedback, obviously this traffic flow doesn't look as good as the other one. But again, this is just throwing it on the page to make sure these fit. Soliciting from feedback, committee had a robust conversation last night, providing feedback on these options that they took, took back. So if you don't mind, what I'd do is I'll go to the other ones and then circle back and you can provide feedback that we can take back to the, to the committee. So the next one is the middle school site. So it just kind of shows, and again, up there on the screen, it's probably a little hard to see. You see the, the, the property line right there and potentially wetlands delineation a little bit over the, over that property line. So this kind of shows that wetland setback of a hundred feet, showing the buildable area of about nine point four acres. Again, that is simply what's buildable, not necessarily where things would go. And then you get into the test fit options for new construction. So this, this first test fit throws that two-story, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand square foot building up in this top left-hand corner in the northwestern corner of the site, where the, where the ball field is now, with a play area immediately adjacent to that and parking along that side there, retaining the turf field, keeping that undisturbed. So this is, this is a test fit. Now, this test fit does not assume, but I, I would, you know, I would venture a guess that we would look to have entrance off the MBT access road and so this would essentially be the front of the, of this site as relates to that.
Wait, sorry, repeat that, Paul.
This test fit does not have an entrance here.
But would theoretically would be.
But I, I would foresee if this was an option, that that would be something we would want to do. And that would, you know, it would, it would be beneficial from lots of different perspectives. Two means of egress from this campus, potentially improving the, the traffic issues here, depending on how it's configured and the, the start times and the impact. You could potentially have both schools entering from the MBT access road, alleviating the, the issues in the mooring here. So this, this again is, is a test fit number one on this site, tucking it back over there, considerations here. Each one of these programs that we will end up doing, they'll have to account for ten to fifteen percent of growth. So what they don't want to do is, here's a building, I fit it into this postage stamp and if we get ten more students, we're, you know, we're out of luck, right? So you need to have a plan that says, I could grow this building by ten to fifteen percent. So in this test fit, you'll see that, well, what would that ten percent, ten, fifteen percent be? Most likely vertical here, right? So because right now, you know, there's not a lot of room on the, on the sides of it. If you go obviously to this side of, of the site, you're talking about a lot of site work and, and ledge over here. Because this, you probably would, you know, in, in future ones that are more detailed, probably topo lines on here would, would be clear that, you know, the, the site severely, you know, inclines over here on the, on the west side.
When we look at these, these squares or rectangles, is the square part of that for the extra space or not?
No, so I, I asked the same question, it's, it's, together that is a two-story, a hundred and twenty. So that blue dotted line is the whole building, they just put the two blocks with a separator. I asked the exact same question last night. I'm like, you know, I asked, like, are you, are you talking about two different buildings that are separated? And you're like, it doesn't really matter, we're just talking about the, the square footage.
Could you identify for people watching with the MBTA there, where the proposed YMCA is going? I think it's important to check.
Yeah, so, so the Y is right down here. So I, I think. So Mr. Adams' dream is to have this solution where.
That was Mark Luther.
You know, where, where we have this proximity in a campus where some of our, our partners are, are that close would be awesome, obviously.
Question, oh, sorry, Jim.
No, no, I, but also mention, Paul, please, going backwards in terms of site, the Mendez site and how that impacts if we build here.
Right, so let me, let me get through the next one and then we'll, we'll circle back to the pros and cons of the sites in general.
And I, and I just want to ask a question about anything here at the middle school. Have we had discussions with Michael about the MBTA access road lock off to High Street? So when Mr. Gaynor sold the land to be able to build the MBTA station, there was a neighborhood sort of agreement apparently that that gate off of High Street is not open. Now, I've had to recently, just because of doctor's appointments with my father, be on one thirty-five at eight o'clock in the morning and it's a nightmare going eastbound. And so I can't imagine adding a school and adding a Y, but half the town is on the northwest side of town and wouldn't have to hit one thirty-five and could go through that. Have we talked about that as a part of this to ease the burden?
Yeah, so.
The emergency gate that comes down the hill.
Yes.
Where a lot of people kind of pull you and drop somebody in there.
Yes, and sometimes it's been open and then eventually it gets closed.
So, uh, so the answer is no, and it's because this was spaghetti thrown against the wall. We are so far, that is so far.
You're not there, you're, and not anywhere near there yet.
The horse can't even see the cart, it's so far ahead, you know, so, uh, it, so we are very much in the preliminary stage right now. It's all about, uh, taking, constructing the large list of options and starting to narrow it down. That's, essentially, that's the committee's primary function right now, is to work with the designer, to go through the process, to say, here are all the viable options, let's get it down, to eventually shortlisting it to maybe three or four options, uh, maybe five, uh, tops.
I know you said they have a traffic engineer, does the traffic engineer also beyond the planning of the routes on the land? Did they also look at the impact for the local neighborhood as far as increased traffic volume, or?
To, to, for, for this site? I mean, because obviously there's not gonna be increase for the other site that's existing. If anything, it alleviates some of the congestion and backlog on Concord Street currently. With whatever we would do, we would obviously improve that.
Yes, but Concord Street is not a major thoroughfare. That would.
No, I think his point is simply that the, the analysis don't have to be done.
Right.
On the middle school's site, cause you're moving a new cluster of people over there.
And they.
Whereas Mendez is the same cluster of people, maybe one grade more.
Right.
But, um.
Right, and, and also, so the traffic engineer, what they've done is, uh, uh, an existing conditions evaluation. So they've put up and, and monitored and, and so, uh, so that, they have, they've collected the data. Um, they can't, uh, really weigh in at this point on what the impacts and mitigations might need to be for the different things until we narrow that down. So these, these are all about, um, and there will be reports and I'll share them with you. So the traffic engineer, I think they got the draft to the designer recently, but they're gonna forward that along. Uh, as we get them, I'll, I'll forward them to, to this group as well.
So they did do a traffic study here already, and that's what our engineers were looking at as well, um, when they were building.
Yeah, there, there's already data that was collected.
Already data here for this project at the town that they had to do when they built the.
The series.
Series. Um, but the one thing they haven't taken into account is the, the one hundred and twenty-nine thousand square foot storage unit that really is right there too, which doesn't really show up that well.
It's a hundred twenty-nine thousand square.
I'm joking, I don't know how big it is, but it's among the strauss.
It's like the, it's the whole lower quarter.
It looks like this.
Yeah, it's that, but right there.
I mean, you could take the building.
Is that the blue box?
Yeah.
It's the blue box, it's red actually.
We're, we're talking about moving that over there.
Yeah.
So then, Jim, one more question as far as traffic.
Yeah.
Um, just, I know it's ahead of the game, but thinking cost savings of potentials and whatnot and scheduling easing, does having two buildings next to each other do anything for busing? Like, would you potentially have less buses or buses at the same time?
We still have to transport the same amount of kids, right?
But would you potentially do it at the same time, cause it's the same, you would.
No, because the, the Mendez school starts earlier. Right? So you would have, you still have the middle and the high school starting at the same time.
Uh, I mean, you, you could.
It's just the flow.
You could theoretically do the middle school and Mendez.
At the same time.
Right, but.
If you look at school, start change.
Oh, God, yes.
Right, but, you know, and again, again, we're getting way ahead of ourselves, but think about a potential second grader on the same bus as an eighth grader.
Right, no, that's what Aaron just said too, right?
Yeah, so, yeah.
So we, we have.
If anything, there's probably more, gonna be a need for additional busing, not less, I would imagine.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're.
If it, if it goes either direction, I would imagine it goes that way. So, um, all right, um, and just note who's asking all the questions and, and elongating the meeting.
Or Matthew.
We would be done now, Paul, if you had asked all those questions two hours ago.
All right, um, so this is, uh, test fit number two on this site. Before we spend too much time on this, um, the feedback from the committee last night is to not pursue this.
Do not pursue this.
Do not.
Not even gonna look at it.
So I will give you the reasons, uh, there's many. So the primary, uh, was the need to relocate the turf field. Um, while yes, on paper, it might be, you know, by the time this project comes to fruition near the end of its expected life, it's a turf field and it'll probably be used well beyond that with good use and, and, and so, um, there's lots of reasons, but, you know, that being a primary one of the additional cost, the, the proximity of, and programming impacts to Min, uh, the middle school, right? So, you know, now, think of the middle school trying to utilize that field, uh, for anything, so there's lots of it. There's this, the, the idea that when this sits, asset over here, that being a common, uh, buffer and, and shared space. So, uh, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this one. If you have a difference of opinion, welcome to hear it, but the overwhelming sentiment.
I'd just say the one thing that I see in the two is, you at least have one more field that's.
Right, and so, 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 so the reason is, see this area here, so it's a combination of this space here.
Right.
And so it's, it's a combination of a couple spaces that would allow that, um, but, uh, but.
You're saying you could sneak in the baseball, and option one, you could theoretically sneak in the baseball field there?
No, no, this, this, this wouldn't, this wouldn't fit it. So, uh, but again, if we're doing this, um, remember who uses, utilizes the field? The, the high school actually utilizes, I believe, uh, this, this backfield here. The middle school uses Stone Park, um, and quite frankly, if the high school's coming all the way over here, wouldn't Mendez be quick, be, be closer? Right, so if we're, if we're no longer, if we're no longer occupying Mendez, that's a bit closer to the high school.
Like, if we were no, if we did something like this and we, are we like theoretically knocking down Mendez and turning it into just the town fields?
Well, so that, that kind of segues into, so there's a couple of things, so.
Not enough to me.
Um, there's multiple layers to this site selection, right? And there's pros and cons to either. Um, so if we go back, um, to, uh, the Mendez, um, so in both of these options, we are demoing Mendez, the building, uh, for sure, right? You can't, can't keep it. Um, that would be a reimbursable cost. Um, so we would be reimbursed a certain portion of that in, in phase two. In these scenarios. Nope, what were you gonna say?
No, no.
In this scenario here, um, we would, if that was deemed what we wanted to do, obviously, in this scenario, we do not have to demo Mendez, right? But if should the town decide to do that, EMSBA will not reimburse, because that is an off-site cost. Now the project is this site, not Mendez, right? We're building a new building here, that is then out of scope for the project. Now, again, that depends on, do we want, does the town, so the process would be, okay, we do this and we, now we occupy this. Now that's no longer a school, this board would then turn, uh, care and custody back over to the town and as a community, we would, we would deem what we wanna do with that property.
Right, they would determine whether there's another.
It could be that, hey, we're gonna keep it as is and there is ways to either utilize it, rent it out, do whatever the case is. There's options there. Obviously, in the Mendez, in building a new, on, on the Mendez site, not an option, it's coming down. Um, here, there's those options. So if it comes down, it comes down completely on the dime of the town. Um, but if we keep it, you know, then the town can do whatever.
So regardless of who has to pay for the demo, like, have you guys determined which is the better site, if that's not a factor?
No, so like I said, this is the first true test fit that we went through last night, and it was literally throwing it out there, uh, something to solicit feedback and go. So, and the primary feedback we gave them is no.
That's a no, that's a non-starter for me.
Uh, and for lots of reasons that I just, that I just mentioned. I don't like the, you know, there, there's also plenty of people that, that, uh, have reservations of just the proximity of these two buildings.
Have you ranked them, do you have a, have a yes somewhere or a maybe?
Well, so, I think we are definitely going to explore both sites. And so this is the option on this site that the committee thought they should continue to pursue, look at the different, uh, options and, and continue to work with. Um, and this might evolve, like I said, right now, it's, it's considering the, all the ingress, uh, to the site being off one thirty-five. Um, but I would assume we would explore options for MBTA access road, um, which would help potentially both buildings. You know, cause I could definitely see if there's, uh, an entrance here with a potential for, uh, some, you know, maybe even take a parking spot row here and make this a little wider so you can have, um, traffic go and maybe take and have this just be an optional exit off onto one thirty-five even for the middle school. So you have the, you have that potential. But the feedback from them was definitely, on this site, was this option was really the only viable for any number of reasons, whether it be political, logistical, financial, um, preserving that field, preserving, quite frankly, this distance. And, you know, this now becomes this shared resource where you have your elementary school kids coming out in the play area, but they wanna throw a ball around, boom, you're right over there into this great, great space. Um, you can, you retain the ability for that usage for programming during the day for, uh, you know, the, uh, physical education and, and different other things.
That was one of the questions I have on this, cause I, I mean, as I look at this model, there's a big field, right, locker field's there. But I'm, I'm trying to visualize and it's been a while, no, it's been a little while since I've been over Mendez and typically I don't go over there during a recess or didn't even when my kids were there. But what about, what does each of the schools use in terms of their outdoor space during the school day? And then their mind, like the practices and field use specifically, but when you're talking about. Either for recess at the, at the, um, elementary level, or I think the kids, the middle school get outside a little bit and it.
Yeah, the, the middle school during lunch, at the end of lunch, they can go out for a little bit. So that, that's one of the things, this allows for them to come out to a space that isn't, boom, oh, there's an elementary school, right?
Yeah, no, I understand that, I'm, I'm thinking about this site generally, and is there sufficient space with that to satisfy the outdoor space usage during the school day from both buildings' perspective?
I, I believe the answer is yes, and, uh, I think, uh, there was no reservation about that from, uh, so obviously, though the building committee, uh, we have, uh, seventeen or eighteen members, we have, uh, twelve voting members, and of those are Claudia and Mike. Um, and I don't, I, I, I think the answer is absolutely, there's, there's enough space. And to answer your question about recess, I have been, all, especially the elementaries, flat green area is well utilized.
Well, that, that's what I was saying about Paul, see, what's behind Mendez now is fairly large. Even though you've got a play area circle on this, my sense is that it's not as big as the back fields.
Right, and so that's why this is, this is quasi-important as well, that they could utilize that field as well, um, for running around throwing the ball, doing whatever they're gonna do. Um, and it preserves that, and it preserves the, the equity for both buildings, right? So you could still run a PE class on this half of the field while they're running around on the other half, right? Even, no matter what you're doing in either, you're certainly not gonna take up that huge field.
Yeah, I, I would assume that to be true, I don't know, cause as long as you guys are asking the questions, it's.
Yeah.
Is Dave involved in this?
No, not at this point, no. But certainly I would imagine the second, if this is chosen as the preferred option, you know, there's gonna be, he's gonna be plenty involved, I would imagine. So, so again, tho, that, that's the, um, those are the, the test fit options. Again, unless somebody feels strongly, this one we threw out, um, as there's just no, no benefit to this, uh, relative to this option. This option, uh, provides all the buffering, shared space, keeps that turf, turf field, um, you know, was, was certainly the best option at this site.
Did we, oh, can you go back for a second? I know there's the wetland, but, and then you've got the.
So there's two property owners here, this is Roodenizer and, 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 and this is owned by Steve Hickey.
Steve, who?
Steve Hickey.
Hickey?
Yeah.
Which you put the, the road basically.
So, 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 so there's a sliver here that, uh, goes all the way to one thirty-five, uh, that is, that is owned by Steve. And then this, the Roodenizer, uh, property that, that had the storage unit is on, goes back, that curls behind them and goes all the way over and they, and all three, uh, properties kind of meet right here.
And there's actually planning in process over here for the Roodenizer is for a medical, um, office space.
There, there's, there's mixed use, there's, there's, there's several things on the table for, for that space.
Just a thought, has there been any consideration to, like, along the access road, purchasing any land from Steve Hickey to put just the parking lot there so that you either preserve field or green space on the school site?
There wouldn't, so.
Even if there was like a walkway?
Yeah, so, I, I don't think, you wouldn't fit enough to make a, a big, big dent, I, I wouldn't imagine. Um, and if anything, you would probably wanna have that for queuing space and, and if you did queuing space, you might do, uh, diagonal parking or something like that, but I don't think it would be impactful enough to fit another field or something on here. Uh, I doubt it, but again, that's, we're on step one of a thousand and that's step.
Yeah, I mean, you could even think across the MBTA road in that area and maybe parking and with a footbridge, who knows? I mean, but there's so many different things.
Yeah, so, so, so there's so many permutations we have, you know, this is literally first, we put some Legos on a, on a, on a page, right, so.
I like the footbridge idea though, that's kinda neat.
Well, I mean, the.
The Williams fund a footbridge.
The architect asked last night, one of the major issues they've had is really about parking, but also proximity for educators to get to the buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Lots of actually conversation within communities, um, where parking for the teachers needed to be a lot closer to the buildings than where they were. It's crazy.
One of the things, given where the plot is gonna go.
Yeah.
You know, having safe means of getting across that.
That, right, that's gonna have to be anyway, right.
You know, that, that's actually.
Yeah, and, 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 and that's a, that's, that, that's a potential need regardless of this project, cause you still have the middle school there and, and they service, certainly service that population as well.
So is there any available land or town-owned land across the street that we know of?
Uh, we haven't really explored over there, we've kind of just explored this, this, this side here. The usage of that would be, as we just talked about, kind of ancillary uses. Uh, I think for the test fits, if it does, we need to make sure that whatever test fit fits on here, I think anything over there would be gravy, uh, frankly.
Yeah, no, I was thinking about the parking issue that Aaron was, I think, and whether you can, you, you go across the street with some of the parking, what is that free up in terms of which is can be open space?
And you said the reason why we, the upper left corner, obviously besides we don't wanna affect Mark's neighbor's backyard, but up there, you said it's expensive cause it's ledge?
Yeah, so the great difference between here and here is, is significant.
There's a significant slope up there.
Yeah, so, look, cause think about, these are the tennis courts, so you're, you're down right here, think of how high the tennis courts are.
Oh, yeah.
So that just gets, that just continues.
Well, in Kate's backyard, we, we ski in Kate's backyard and that's.
Yeah, so, so, so that just continues throughout there, so, um, you want, you wanna start going high on site costs, start going left here.
Okay, sure.
Um, so.
So Paul, what, what are you most specifically looking for, feedback from us tonight?
Any feedback you, you wanna give, like I said, uh, you know, unless this board feels very strongly differently, I can't imagine you would. This was thrown out, uh, last night, uh, this, this option with the building in the middle. Um, this was the option in this site that was, uh, mentioned. Fields have always been a conver, subject of conversation, so, uh, Aaron will certainly be continuing those conversations. Um, uh, you know, at the end of the day, even this solution, depending on what happens at the Mendez site, I don't think we would be net deficit on fields, we would actually be net positive by a substantial amount because we're better utilizing this from a building perspective and, and opening up a very large parcel for whatever that use is. Now, I'm saying that we would put fields there, again, that's not even, either the building committee or this committee's purview as to what happens afterwards if this site was selected.
That's what concerns me a little bit on that, is that right now, if with this kind of design that we're looking at on the screen, you're losing the field to the right of the football field, you're losing the baseball field in the back and then the kind of open space in between.
The flag football, I think that's where high school flag football plays, right?
Yeah, I mean, also, so. So, I mean, you're, you're losing a lot of that, um, and unless the town does make a commitment to repurpose the Mendez property in total, make like a field complex, you, you really, I think best you come out even, even if you do that, um, it would come out.
Now, I, I, I would. Now, I, I, I would, you know, obviously it's well down the line, I have no purview over it. But to do anything that would substantially decrement the amount of open space at that site means we, we've come into a lot of money. Because this, the, the, the cheapest thing is open fields, right, and using it in, in some passive recreation like that.
But you got to pay the building out of the way first, right, if you're, if you're taking the Mendez, you got to take the Mendez building down to turn it into something else. And that, that's the part that, that the town would have to commit to, to kind of balance out the loss of fields, middle school site.
Yeah, I think we're overstating the, the, the usage here from what I've heard, right? So I don't know that this is heavily used aside from practices and different things. But I could be wrong, we, we, we certainly have people on the committee very much involved with that, with, with all that stuff. Voicing, voicing the same concerns.
Not at this point, it's not, it wouldn't need to be.
So, but again, these are just test fits as we go down the, the road. And this isn't the only time you'll see these test fits. So the, the goal, the, the mission of the building committee is to take what is going to be ten options or whatever, try to narrow that down to probably four would be a realistic goal. One of them will have to be an adrenno. One of them will have to be new construction, but we'll probably have new construction options on both sites. So minimum of three, probably four or five tops of those. And then we can, at that point, more, more diligence have been done around all those things and we would have, you know, a lot better conversations about, hey, what if, what if? And during those conversations, it wouldn't be just me standing up here, this is informational and soliciting feedback for us to take back. We would have the project team here to talk more about that and potentially sub consultants to, to go over that stuff as well. So I think that one's a pretty obvious, hey, pursue this one, not, not the other one. Thoughts or anything on these two at the Mendez site? You know, so this one, again, could be influenced a little bit by the wetlands here. You know, I'm assuming the Butters would rather not, you know, not have a building so close to the property line as well. From a frontage perspective and invisibility, having the building back there, you're like, okay, where's the building? All I see is fields and parking lots. So aesthetically, you know, and things like that, what does that mean? As opposed to this one where now, okay, I see this, this is a, you know, elementary school with a play area and parking that is right next to the building over here, you know, pushes us away from that setback, provides more of a buffer to the property lines on that side. So from a sighting perspective, the designer likes this, I think the committee in general thought this was a better one, should it work? Logistically, you know, this one is obviously the, the building itself is closer to the current. But, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean that's worse. So your activity of heavy machinery and moving would be all over here further away from the kids. And things like that. Now, obviously all this is going to be fenced and stuff, but, but certainly the, the, the movement and things like that would be further away, potentially less, less impactful from dust and, and noise and things like that.
How long is the ballpark?
Two years.
Two years?
Yeah.
Well, I guess in terms of the, my just general feedback, the thing I like about the middle school is the proximity to the Y.
Yep.
You know, I, I think that's, that's something that's really significant to have either third through eighth or two, second through eighth. Having the ability to access that facility after school, I think is, is a, a real valuable thing. I don't know what the, the options would be for people who would be in a building at the current Mendez site to get over there, I suspect that there's.
Like a late bus kind of thing, yeah.
I mean, I'm sure there's, there's some way that that kind of thing could be sorted out. But as between the, the two Mendez designs, I certainly think the one you've got up there is, is the better of the two. I mean, I'm not sure if that's the kind of feedback you're looking for, but.
A, a, any, any and all feedback, really. Yeah, so.
These are the only two sites that we're looking at?
Right, they're the, they're the only viable sites, they're the ones we've, we've looked at. And, you know, both sites, the, the designer is confident in both sites being viable. So what else, what I will say is obviously in, in this one, again, the, the ten to fifteen percent incremental add if needed would probably be, be vertical. And it was brought up last night about what does that mean for displacement? And the answer to that is probably over here in the middle school, right? So taking potentially maybe the fifth grade or something like that for that, that, you know, that year, that semester, or whatever the case is, however long a building project would go up and you could take and you potentially move them over into space in the middle school.
You're talking about if you've got future growth.
Right, for, for future growth, so, so should that come to fruition? We're, we're eight years down the line and you know what, we did have a spike that was unforeseen and we do need more space. This, this, this scenario, obviously, unless we do a lot of site work and go, you know, west, is probably a vertical, a, a vertical thing. And that displacement, we wouldn't necessarily need modulators, there might be some, you know, expense to fitting whatever over in the middle school, but there, there's probably space over there for that. Now, again, if it's eight years down the line, things can change, but so, other, other thoughts on any of these options, different sites, what are your feelings? You know, are, are you liking one, not liking the other? And again, what I would, what I'll also mention is, should it be a middle school, new construction and a two through five option? Now we're looking at two properties that will be turned back to the town. So with, with all that, I couldn't foresee the town, you know, sticking, thumbing the nose at the residents for field space and things like that. Certainly from a use perspective, it's cheaper of the options and, you know.
Sorry, which is the cheaper, Paul?
Field space as opposed to some other, some, passive recreation is a lot cheaper than some, you know, putting something there. And again, that would, that, that's pretty cool from my perspective that we would turn over now two new spots to, for whatever usage to the community as a whole, which obviously the, the, the people that are involved in that, there's such the need that there's probably enough people that would influence how that, that gets used. If we didn't have the need for the, the, the fields, our population that would influence that decision would be low. But it's going to be a fair, fairly substantial population, I would imagine. So their voice, I would imagine, would be, you know, very much a part of whatever the decision the community makes on the use of the, those parcels. So other thoughts on any of these options? I know we're late, but this is, this is the part that Jim and I both thought you, you know, we, what we wanted, make sure you, you heard this and saw what, what the, what the test fit options were and provide any feedback we can, we can give the designer as, as they.
Is the feedback necessary tonight, Paul, as far as timing of meetings in the future? Or would it be possible to like really look at these designs and drawings and sort of take notes on each of them and then either get them to you one-on-one or say them in open meeting?
You can certainly send them to me, you know, so I can, and I can forward them on to the designer and he can incorporate things in there, we can go over at building committee meetings. Remind me, Jim, is, what's the twelfth, our next one?
Correct.
November twelfth?
November twelfth is our next building committee meeting. But, but by all means, this isn't the, this isn't a one, one bite at the apple thing. I'll, I'll say our PDP submission, we're looking to have, you know, finalized by December third, I believe is our meeting, right, Jim?
Yep.
And so that means we've taken the, you know, this big list and kind of, you know, shook out the, the stragglers at that point.
On, on this option four.
Okay.
New construction. I, I like the layout with the building is, my, just a slight concern about how many more trees we'll have to take down, but.
Well, I think.
From the first one. It's hard to tell from the.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's substantial, I think both of these retain most of, 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 of the wooded area. I think there's certainly a little bit that would need, need to come there, but I, I think that the, because I think Kent mentioned it last night, that both of them don't involve going very far into that, into the woods. Both options leave the woods essentially intact, modular some.
Just one thing that's popped in my head, Paul, and I don't think we've explained it further tonight, but when I was on the space needs committee way back when now, and we talked about plopping up a new building right about where you've got it, which is in there. There was concern that there was water running under the whole property and that the, the, the problem that we have in the current building, flooding because of underwater.
I, 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 I wouldn't worry too much about that, so the hydrology and everything is going to be studied, they've done test borings, so.
So they've already done that work?
Yeah, so, so they've done site work, they've done borings back here. The, the issue right now is that this building right here doesn't have proper drainage, it is sitting in the, and the grading goes right to it, that's, that's really the issue. You could take and build a building exactly where it is and get it right and wouldn't have the water issues with proper drainage and proper grading, so. Yeah, the, 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 the designer and OPMs and everybody, they're, they're, they're confident that these are viable options. Even remember that, remember this, this is the adrenno. This, if anything, goes further into that. Right, this is still viable, right? Is there site work, is there drain, drainage work? Absolutely, but it's certainly, we don't have hydrology on this site that is really all that abnormal. You know, they, they certainly have projects that tackle a lot more challenging sites than, than these. And they, they, quite frankly, they, they, they said that at the meeting, right? We're fortunate in our options here, there's, they, they, they're faced with, with many projects that don't have the options and the really part, you know, because we went through, why do people sometimes choose ad rennos? And it's because they have to sometimes, because there isn't the option to build next to and, and do those things. Sometimes, you know, an ad renno might make a heck of a lot more sense here if the building wasn't so far out of date from code perspective and there wasn't so much work. You know, say, if, say it was only twenty years old and, and pretty much up to, up to code, so. So.
Thank you, Paul.
You, feel free to email me other things, Jim, we can get it to the designer and get it to the building committee. Again, this isn't the only bite at the apple, but this is something that was presented last night.
Yeah, it's great. It's already gone.
It's good to see all those concepts.
And Rachel, if you have any, this is, you know, anybody can comment on this, we, we value your input, obviously, as, as always. And if you or any of the students want to come to the, the forum on the twenty-ninth, it's, that'd be great as well. That, having students that have gone through the system, helping to shape the, the educational visioning would be great, so.
Thank you, Paul, and, and for all the work that you're doing on the committee and that was helpful to understand. We're going to start, you guys, neither one of you have a report. Kathy, the warrant.
That was a statement, not a question, just so we're clear. Put that in, make sure Aaron, please, put that in the minutes.
Yes.
The chair stated the fact.
There will be no reports.
There will be no reports.
I love it.
I do have some more to record.
Okay. I swore in the oath of office to move the meeting along.
Between September seventh, two thousand nineteen and October twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, I, Kathleen Bates, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of one million, two hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty cents. This includes general fund expenses of six hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. Revolving expenses of five hundred forty-eight thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars and sixteen cents. And grant expenses of nine thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty cents. Meals tax expenses of one hundred eighty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Finally, I authorize payroll in the amount of three million, three hundred fifty thousand, three hundred dollars and twelve cents.
Thank you, Kathy. Anybody have anything on the August thirteenth minutes?
I don't think I did.
A motion to approve them?
No question.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
September eleventh minutes? Mark made the motion.
I second.
Paul second, all in favor? We do have some gifts and donations.
We do. In the amount of four hundred ninety-nine dollars, decisions at every turn, another two hundred twenty-eight dollars from decisions at every turn. Pfizer Foundation, a hundred dollars to AHS. Plan AID, thirty-one dollars, eighty-five cents to general donations. Plan AID again, seven hundred sixty-seven dollars, thirteen cents. Multiple folks donated to Ashpac, four hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. Wait, eighteen dollars, seventy-five cents for AHS student council. Pfizer Foundation again, two hundred fifty dollars for the middle school miscellaneous donation. Ashland K-12 PTO, one thousand five hundred dollars for the Mendez Student Activities account for the Plymouth Plantation Field Trip. And then Agosto, and I'm going to mispronounce his name, Goych Gonzalez, a hundred dollars for the APS Helping Our Own Fund. For a total of three thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents.
Oh, excellent, do we have a motion to accept the gifts and donations?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, Jim, just quick question.
Yeah.
When we redid the fundraising policies and some of those things, we did mention that while we gave the, the authority of the building principals to, to receive those funds, that we would have periodic reports of, of, of those.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure that designer radar to figure out when it makes sense to have, have those reports.
Yep, okay, I'll talk to Barbara.
I'm not saying right now.
No, 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 I, no, I'll just write it down.
Whatever the right time is.
Yep, thank you for reminding me.
Thank you. Okay, member updates, Rachel?
I've been very busy. I just submitted my application for early decision to Villanova.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you, yeah, nerve-wracking.
It is.
Sitting there, I was like.
Lucky to have you.
Yeah, send.
Yeah, I felt good though to get it out.
I bet, yes. Yeah, well, we wish you all the best with that.
Thank you, yeah.
We toured that campus, that's a great school.
It's beautiful, I loved it.
Although my son said, he's like, everyone here is so tall. That was just, it's so funny, the things that impact people.
They grow up differently in Philadelphia.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well then, I mean, we didn't even realize at the time afterwards, I was like, oh, duh, you know.
It was basketball orientation day too.
Probably was.
Yeah.
Recruiting day.
Yeah, but it's a beautiful campus.
It is.
So good, that's nice, you've got a good head start.
Yes.
And now you just wait, right, for them.
Yep.
Mr. Kendall? Yeah, well, you just told us what you've been up to. You don't get to talk anymore. Stop, 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 I'm just kidding.
Kudos to Coach McKay for.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, thanks for saying that, right. It's a great.
Coach of the league for the Patriots. You know, so I'm assuming it was a thrill firmly to create the reward, but also have Andre tip it out to present it.
That was fun.
And Laura and I were both.
Yeah, thanks for representing the school committee.
And, I don't know, I, I didn't look back much.
Um, let's see, what have I done? I went to the, um, the SBA, the, the kick, the kickoff meeting that you guys had at the Mendez. Parents' night at the high school, my last parents' night.
Wow, Kathy.
A lot of laughs this year. Ashpac, and I, I observed the, the visioning meeting they had, I think you guys might have gone to the first one at the high school.
I think you guys might've gone to the first one at high school, I went to the second one, I just observed, I just wanted to see the process, looks like a great process.
Join us, though, when, when.
I will, I, yeah. And then I watched Family Feud for a little bit to watch Dr. Kyra and his family.
Lose. So, yeah, you covered a couple of things, the first visioning exercise that Laura and I were at a couple of weeks ago. There's something else in there that went in and out of my brain, but this way I'm just gonna pass the baton on.
Yeah, the only thing I'd, I'll add is site council today, uh, in addition to the couple of things that I did with you. Yes, I'm on the high school, uh, site council this year again, and I did attend that meeting, and I'll as well. Yeah. All right, um, action items.
Are we gonna put the, um, appointment of MASU voting delegate on the next?
Yes.
We'll do the next time.
Everybody okay with that?
Oh, no, that's fine, just wanted to make sure you didn't just.
Thank you.
I've actually read the resolutions, I have notes.
Okay.
Do you really?
I read through them, too.
Oh, excellent.
He just plagiarized whatever came from his office on.
Yeah, same on the action items, fees, fee structure, Columbus Day, Minda's academic study, all these things are ongoing, communication strategies, school committee goals, and the, uh, voting delegate, which we will do next term.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You and I need to get together some.
When is our next meeting?
Yes, we do.
Next week is Wednesday.
Oh, right, 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 we'll, we, okay.
All right, I think that's it.
I move to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, thank you.